So I want to introduce very quickly that met in the la ciudad, Capieda and Emma. I'm not, I call you Emma is will leave tomorrow to go figure up in South America. She's not here, but I wanted to, I requested that that she would be on the night, who is a criminal law judge here in the Superior Court of California. Also swore me in when it became an attorney. So in the process, I want to ask that she would be, she was sworn in.
I'm going to get third. I'll have to keep reading your right hand. And that I swear. I state your name.
I solemnly swear.
Sow and swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
About, upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Hello, Sarah Hernandez. I'm really excited to be here today. Today, I asked my mother, who sits on the bench for the State of California, to swear me in as well. And this is my, my father, Robert Pintas, and my husband, Keith.
I solemnly swear, solemnly swear, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic, against all enemies foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States, to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of California. That I take this obligation freely, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kelsey Ino, seat seven. And then reading the oath for me is my auntie Joanne Kumamoto. And my parents Patty and Steve are here to stand with me. And I believe my dad, Steve, and my partner Marcus are online.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I instate your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties of which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Oh, my God.
Welcome, everyone. May we have roll call? Let me just say, yeah, roll call. Meeting will come to order, may I have roll call?
Trustee Bueno.
Here.
Trustee Henderson.
Here.
Trustee Hernandez. Trustee Hoffman.
Here.
Trustee Ino.
Here.
Trustee Vella.
Here.
Trustee Verres.
Here.
Student trustee Callahan.
Law.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, we'll. Trustee Hoffman, could you please lead the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we would like to adjourn in the meeting in the, in memory of Mr. Randy Kitts. Randy was a recent graduate of LA Trade Tech. He would, he worked in academic corrections and tutored English up until the day he passed away from a motorcycle accident at the end of October. Randy Kitts was a bright and active presence on campus and was also a member of the Guardian Scholars Program. Dr. Dion Washington shared that Randy's contributions were, were innumerable, and he will be greatly missed. On behalf of the entire Los Angeles Community College District, we extend our deepest condolences to the Kitts family. We will now move to section C, where we will now open nominations for, where, where we do board president and vice president elections. May I have board members, we will proceed now to the elections. I declare nominations open for the position, I mean, let's see. I will now take nominations for the position of president of the board. Are there any nominations?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes, I'd like to nominate trustee Vella for president.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Hoffman, second. Okay, any comments or any additional nomination? Any none? Roll call.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote.
One second. Oh, we will close the nominations. Okay, roll call.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno.
Proudly, yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman, yes. Trustee Ino, yes. Trustee Vella.
Yes.
Trustee Verres.
Yes.
We will now, the gavel will now be turned over to President Vella, and he will take my seat.
And my coffee. All right. Thank you, everybody, for joining us today. I'll go ahead and begin, continue the process of electing our board leadership, and then I'll go ahead and ask if the trustees have any comments after this. So thank you all again. So at this point, I do declare nominations open for the position of first vice president of the board. Yes, Ms. Hoffman?
Yes, I would like to nominate trustee Nichelle Henderson as first vice president of this board.
Any second?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it over here with our trustee Bueno. All right.
I would like to second that nomination.
Okay, at that point, we're going to close the nominations, and then we're going to go ahead and do roll call.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno.
Absolutely, yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vella.
Yes.
Trustee Verres.
Yes.
Congratulations. So what we're going to do at this point is take a vote amongst the trustees to establish the position of second vice president. This has traditionally been in the last two years, a position that we include in our board leadership. So at this time, I would like for someone to declare a motion to establish a second vice president of the board of trustees.
Make the motion.
Okay, trustee Verres made the motion, second.
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Hernandez, second. Any discussion on this? All right, let's do roll call.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vella.
Yes.
Trustee Verres.
Yes.
All right, at this time, motion passed. I will now entertain nomination for the position of second vice president of the board of trustees. Any motion?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Trustee Verres is nominating trustee Ino. Any second?
I'll second.
Trustee Hoffman, second to that motion. Any discussion? Any other nominations?
Can, can I just say some, can I ask some discussion? You know, I think originally, this second VP position, many years ago, before I was on the board, was created for a particular board member to give them a, like, a role so they feel like they're an officer, but there was really no, there were no duties attached to the role. And I'm really proud of this board for actually having kind of succession planning and leadership by having a first vice president and a second vice president, because it gives an opportunity to a newer board member to learn how to become vice president and then president of this board. You'll be in on agenda review, and you'll be able to meet with the chancellor on a regular basis and, you know, learn from your colleagues. And so, number one, congratulations on being elected and sworn in today after we appointed you eight months ago. And I'm really excited to see your growth and development. So I think this is a really great way for us to start out our new board. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Excellent, thank you so much, trustee Hoffman. Any other discussion? Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the nominations, and let's go for a vote.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote.
Yes.
Trustee Bueno.
Proudly, yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes, and thank you.
Trustee Vella.
Yes.
Trustee Verres.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, congratulations. Trustee Ino as the new second vice president. So at this time, I'm going to take a quick break so that people could go ahead and sit in their appropriate chairs, is that okay? Yeah, unless you guys want to just do the meeting today, and we'll deal with that later? Okay, it's up to you guys. I know vice president's here. You can move. Okay. All right, in the meantime, what I would like to do before we go on with our agenda is open it up to the trustees for any comments, discussion about, you know, our new board leadership, our new trustees. Last year, I'll begin with former president Bueno.
Thank you very much, as the name tags change. I'm going to make just some quick comments in English and in Spanish. I want to thank my colleagues for the opportunity to serve as president this year, and specifically President Vella and Henderson for working as a team. Much was accomplished, but I want to congratulate President Vella, Vice President Henderson, and second president, vice president Ino, on their election, and I am looking forward to working through their direction and guidance throughout the upcoming year. Thank you to the staff that accomplished huge feats throughout the year, and specifically Chancellor Rodriguez, Dr. Smith, General Counsel Medina, and all staff, presidents, faculty, and staff. And we know that there are tens of thousands. We are moving through COVID and surviving and poised to thrive, on thriving. As a community college, one of the most diverse, and one of the most diverse, diverse areas of earth, how we behave sends a message to the region. I want to thank everyone.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that, trustee Bueno. Is there any other language that you're going to say this in?
Maybe.
Okay, well, we know. No, and we.
Monolingua is only one.
I was going to say monolingua. But we really. Thank you so much for, trustee Bueno. Let's go ahead and open it up to the rest of the board. We'll start with trustee Hoffman, to my left.
Oh, thank you. First of all, congratulations, board president. Sounds nice. And to all the board officers, and thank you, trustee Bueno, for your service for the last year. It was a, it was an interesting year, half in person and half online, and lots of challenges. And I'm just really excited that we have new leadership and new board members. And let me just remind everybody, for a long time, I was the only woman on this board, and now we are the board majority, so watch out, chancellor. Watch out, that's all I got to say. Anyway, so really excited to be here today in person for this board meeting, and welcome new colleagues and new board leadership. Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Hoffman. Trustee Hernandez.
Yeah, congratulations to the board leadership. Obviously, I'm very, very new to this, though, you know, I'm just so excited to move forward. I know many of you personally throughout the years before this election, and I'm, I'm so excited to, to work and engage with all of you, and I'm very, very proud of, you know, everything that's been accomplished on this board so far, and can't wait to continue that with you all in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Trustee Ino.
I just want to say thank you to everyone here. You believed in me for the appointment process, and I was able to pull through to be elected with all of you wonderful, wonderful people. I'm, I'm very excited to do the work with everyone. I'm very hopeful for our future, because we have excellent trustees and a chancellor sitting here today. And so I welcome Sarah, and I'm very excited to work with her. She and I got to be on the campaign trail together, and she's going to do great work with us, and so I'm very excited. Thank you to trustee Hoffman for the nomination for, to be able to sit. I think being recognized as VP two is significant. So hopefully, with all of your help and support, we can move things along. Congratulations, trustee Vella, president Vella, and VP Henderson. And thank you so much, trustee Bueno, for your past year, or eight months since I've been here. I've learned a lot. It's been like drinking out of a fire hose, and I look forward to working with all of us as we continue on, and just, I think, continuous support from trustee Vella. And trustee Callahan, I, you amaze me with all of the things that you're managing to juggle and how much you care about our institution, and so I'm very excited to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ino. Trustee Callahan.
Me? Absolutely. I'll read you up like the whole room. You're in it. So, um, I guess, congratulations to the, to you, board president Vella, and also Henderson, being, working with you guys on the board has been a very enlightening experience. Again, being a student trustee and just being on this board has been a lot for me, especially with being a, having my hands in so many honeypots. And, um, yeah, being due to this experience, I can see how, at least from my perspective as, as a student trustee, I can see how this can be kind of intimidating for both trustee Ino and for Sarah, since this is their first time serving on the board, even though Ino's been here for a little while now. But I'm just excited to be working with you guys for the rest of my term, and hopefully with some of the things that, and some of the ambitious projects that you guys have been on the table, and some of the things I have in mind, we can make the district better than it's ever been. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Callahan. Trustee Verres.
Thank you. For those that were wondering, I also was part of this election cycle. But today was a day that my kids had their holiday concert at school. So I don't know what was worse than missing my swearing in or me missing their concert. You know, I'm, I'm actually voting for me missing their concert right now, but, but I get a chance now, I think. Some of the oldest one on the board, not oldest by age, but oldest in terms of service.
Yeah.
And it's, 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 uh, from the first time I did a swearing in, 2011, to today, it never grows old, obviously, to see the oath taken and the seriousness of, of, of the calling that we're in. And of course, we all get called to a public service that's as much a service to the community as anything. And so, so I know I've had a chance to love it for just about ten years. And I think all of you that are, in your first time doing it, will get a chance to love it in as many ways as, as I have. You know, we have two that have gone through the appointment process, but now we're 100% voter validated.
There we go.
Right, which is, which is always great to know. And that you can make an appointment as a board member, and that voters can affirm it. Means that there's something really positive with the candidate that's, that's been chosen to move forward and, and do the business of the people. You know, as we move forward, there's lots of optimism. I think we've come through the pandemic in ways that we never imagined and are still sitting here as hopeful and as energized about what a future can be. And so I think that's really exciting. And so for the, for the new officers, for, for, for president Vella and, and our vice presidents, you know, the great thing is, is the board is actually full of leadership experience. And I think those of us who have had a chance to serve as president, and Bueno, myself, and, and Ms. Hoffman in the past, we, we also stand here as, as, as past presidents to support our current leadership and to know that you can also always draw on our experience. I mean, I think sometimes we offer it maybe more than you want to hear it. But we're also here to support that and to be able to draw on the experiences of being able to hold the gavel. Some of us like to bang it harder than others. But, but each of those experiences, we hope, can be a support system, a pillar in, in the new leadership to this board. We elect you to be our voices. We elect you with confidence to, to be able to be present in spaces where we can't be. And I think that's, that's an outstanding commitment that you get a chance to, to do through this next year. So, so with that, I'm excited to begin my new term. Really excited to see our leadership change and to know that we all are leaders every day and every moment of this board. You know, I am especially excited to see Sarah join us. You know, I only get a chance to say I'm the oldest, because me and Ernie always had an ongoing thing, because he's been in this institution for a really long time, but I've been elected a little bit longer than him. So now I don't even have that debate, it's clear.
Wait, are you saying you're the oldest? I'll take that, you can be the oldest. You can be the oldest.
Longest serving, longest serving. How's that, is that better?
How about longest consecutive serving and oldest?
We'll give you that one, then. But, but with, with great appreciation and great anticipation for a really positive year forward and a really deep appreciation for all the work of the past year. And, you know, certainly, I think this is a, a new space for this board to enter. So congratulations to all the new leadership and officially to all the new trustees that joined this board.
Thank you so much, trustee Verres. Vice President Henderson.
Thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our trustees Verres and Bueno on being reelected. And welcome officially, officially, long term, trustee Ino, and welcome trustee Hernandez to the board. As trustee Hoffman stated, we have a now majority board of women.
Yay.
But I think this is the first time in LACC history that the female majority has been so ethnically diverse. And I think that that is huge as we move forward with our racial equity and just social justice work. So I think that that's huge. I want to also thank trustee Bueno for his leadership this past year. He has been absolutely wonderful to work with, and I've had a, an opportunity to really get to know him as a human being, and I have a great deal of respect and regard for his leadership and how he's moved us forward in so many ways. And, and I'm so eager and excited to work with my good friend, trustee Vella, as the board president, and, and work with each and every one of you. And I'm going to miss not sitting next to trustee, student trustee Callahan this year. So I'm going to, I might have to switch seats every now and again. But thank you all for being here with us. Thank you for joining in the celebration of our new trustees and the return of our more seasoned trustees. And I'm eager to complete some of the work that I've started over the past year and a half. So I'm very excited. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice President Henderson. I'll just go ahead and be brief, because I know we have a, a lot of work. But, you know, first off, I wanted to really thank outgoing president trustee Gabriel Bueno. You know, working as the vice president alongside him, I saw really how complex, you know, and working with the chancellor, our system really is, and how, in reality, we have so much talent in this district. So, you know, you were able to really hone in on, you know, not only the issues, but creating solutions to the issues. And I think, as you know, I'm really big on that. And I think the second thing is that there is still this faith in the, in the institution that LACC is. And whether, I think, we disagree or agree on certain topics or policies, I think that you were able to launch and really highlight the strengths of this district. There was a lot of good things that we did together as a team. You know, just to name a few, we passed, with the help of our colleagues in particular, you know, the, the rest of the colleagues, we passed a $5.2 billion construction bond, measure LA. And, and again, that was, you know, definitely got to give credit to, to you, president, outgoing president Bueno, and, and also to the rest of the trustees, and also to the expertise from trustee, trustee Verres. We also really committed to intersectionality. Um, we also really uh, committed to intersectionality. And we were able to put some positions over in some colleges for Chicano queer studies, which was a big thing. So that's something that we did last year as a team. We also really pushed a lot of proactive legislation for the district with our policy committees. Not that I'm bragging about it because I chaired it, but there was a lot of law that we got back, I think eight of them or something. But again, this is just um, work together. And you know, unprecedented uh, state and federal earmarks and budget supplements for the district. I mean, obviously the one I'm proud of and Maria knows this is LGBT money, but there was just so much other stuff. We got a million bucks for Vincent Prize to digitize their collection. I mean, yeah, it needs a round of applause. That was a lot of work. But you know, I wanted to again, highlight um, and thank, you know, outgoing president Buena. Thank you so much, sir, for your hard work. Um, again, now I want to congratulate our, the new trustees. I want to call it the new kids. I promise I won't be like the Mean Girls where you're the new kids and I'll be the Plastics. But um, but really, congratulations trustee Hernandez. I'm so, so happy that you're gonna be with us in this board. Uh, trustee Eno, I mean, just, I mean, a go-getter, um, just dynamite, you know, congratulations to you both. Um, my wonderful, you know, colleague that I've had the privilege of knowing for more than, and trustee Hoffman, you can understand this, not more than you. Uh, but you know, uh, trustee Buena, congratulations on your election. Trustee Vettis as well, as well. Um, and again, also, you know, thank trustee Hoffman for your support um, for me to be board president. Thank you so much, trustee Hoffman. You know, it is a, a new day at LACC, but not for the sake of saying it. But you know, I will be representing, I'll be the first ever openly LGBT man of color to be president of this board. So I think that says something about diversity, uh, being a Mexican-American gay man, a brown gay man i- is definitely, I think, um, you know, something to be said. I'm very proud of the relationship that I've built with our students. Um, you know, when I, you know, saw trustee Callahan, our student trustee, come and talk real about the issues that are affecting our students. I really did feel that I connected with you um, because although I'm not the youngest on this board. Um, for, it wasn't that long ago for me that I was a college student. I must say, I mean, I'm still, you know, heater tottering on that. Um, I'm not gonna tell you how old I am, if that's what you want to know. But but that was really important to have that representation. And um, not only because I'm brown and gay, but because I come from a disadvantaged background. I grew up extremely um, you know, low income um, renter and all that. And I think that matters, right? When you're dealing with, with uh, leadership. And so one of the first things that I would, you know, really say about my incoming presidency is that I will be extremely student-focused. Um, and I think that that's really something that um, it's been at the core of of who I am. Because really, we wouldn't be here without our students. Um, none of us would. And so I think that that's gonna be something that I will lean on, the student trustee, the student advisory committee. SEC as well as our student population. And you know, when I got appointed, I was able to visit each college. And I think I'm gonna do the same, or I'll talk to the college presidents through Zoom, whichever one you want. Um, but you know, I would like to go visit your colleges as well and meet with your student uh, body and your presidents to our college presidents. Um, immediately uh, after today, I, I do want to establish an ad hoc on basic needs. And that is against student-focused. And I invite um, you know, and congratulate trustee Hoffman for also sitting on committees for the community, California Community College League. We want to work in tandem, trustee Hoffman, with the league and what they're doing on basic needs and student housing, as well as with all of you who are doing things out there. Um, and so we will uh, do that. Next up is also uh, implementing the bond is gonna be another focus. That's gonna be pretty big. I think we're gonna have some amazing ideas coming from each college president on how they would utilize the bond and really upgrade our facilities. I think um, I'm really excited for all of the college presidents. We're having that in mind. Um, and then, you know, planning for hold harmless, you know, this is something that's uh, gonna be very important for us to really focus on what's gonna happen when we're not helped as much by the state. And I am very confident with the chancellor and my colleagues and board leadership that we will, we will begin that conversation. Um, and then obviously, the big one is, is increasing enrollment. Um, we have great ideas. I was able to um, you know, talk to our um, outgoing board leadership as well as our incoming board leadership and the chancellor about that. Enhancing our budget, legislative advocacy is obviously a no-brainer. We're um, I think, one of the most successful um, college districts uh, when it comes to legislative advocacy. So again, round of applause for our new board leadership. Thank you guys so much. And if there isn't any more discussion, we'll begin our board meeting, our business. Let's do it. All right. So next up is approval of the agenda. But before we move to approve the order of the business today's meetings, chancellor, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, uh, board president Vella, there is one change. Uh, good afternoon to all trustees. There is one change. I'd like to respectfully, uh, pull item B1, B1, as former trustee, what I know, uh, not be able to join us today. So if I can note down the agenda, item B1 is pulled. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any comment on that? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda and order of business with the recommended changes? Any second? Second by trustee Vettis. All right, let's go ahead and get a vote.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Uh, next up is ye approve of the minutes. May I have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting in closed session or remember second and special meetings November 14th, December 4th?
So moved.
Any second?
Second.
Second by trustee Henderson. Actually, I'll give it to trustee Callahan. Um, okay, let's take a vote. First, uh, motion by trustee Eno.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next up, reports from the representative employer organizations. Do any members of the resource table wish to be recognized at this time to make comments before the board? Um, please go ahead and raise your hand. Okay, let's start with uh, with Dr. McKiever. Go ahead, Dr. McKiever. With AFT. Welcome.
Thank you. I want to say what a great looking board. So uh, I want to congratulate uh, president Vella on being elected now. And also want to graduate trustees Eno, Veras, Hernandez, all right, and Buena as being reelected. We really do appreciate it, newly elected. So we really do appreciate the work that you've done and we continue. We look forward to continue to work with you in the future. Um, I also want to take a moment to thank the chancellor, also thank the board of trustees for supporting our adjunct healthcare temporary MOU. Okay, uh, this was really important. When I spoke to the chancellor on the phone about it, I appreciate what you said about this, this is the right thing to do. And it absolutely was the right thing to do to support our adjuncts with healthcare, particularly at this time. I think, as you said, no one wants to call them uh, right before Christmas and tells them that they lose their healthcare. And that's a horrible thing. And we need to do something permanently. And I know we're working on it and we're gonna continue to work on that. All right. I also want to say that this is also a time when people become really reflexive and talk about what they're grateful for. But I do want us to take a moment to think about the people who are grateful for the work that we do, right? Our students and our communities. And this is the most important thing that we can do. It's the only reason why any of us are here in this room right now is the work we do for our students and our communities. I've been in this job for six months and I feel like I've been let's say frustrated by the inability to get to working on things, to bring our communities back to community college and uh, work on our enrollments. And I'm looking forward to starting in January with you all to do these type of things and to make sure that we have healthy communities in the future. All right, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. McKiever. Really appreciate you. Um, anyone else? Yes, come on up with AFT 1521A, Ms. Alonso.
Welcome.
Hello. It's quite intimidating that everybody's here today. Um, good afternoon, newly elected board president Vella, VPs Henderson and Eno, chancellor Rodriguez, board colleagues and guests. Uh, my name is Hazel Alonso, president for college staff, staff guild, local AFT 1521A. First and foremost, congratulations to the newly elected trustees to the board. Congratulations as well for a successful reelection to LACC's continuing board members, as well as a warm welcome to our new faces. And lastly, best wishes and success on new endeavors for our outgoing trustees. On behalf of AFT 1521A, we wish for continued collaboration with this board as we move into a new year and a new bargaining cycle. We hope that our continued duration for the need for more classified hiring, higher pay and better working conditions are met with more action and consideration by this new board. AFT 1521A will continue to hold you accountable for ensuring that our voices are heard. You must never forget um, that you not only speak on behalf of LACC administration, but for the very people that work for you. AFT 1521A, as well as my fellow union colleagues, are your constituents. And as we move into new year, I truly hope that the sentiment is not forgotten. While we do celebrate our successes of 2022, as, as board president Vella mentioned earlier, and plan for further advancement within our colleges for 2023, do not forget that even as we speak, there are classified employees who are still struggling to put food on their table or pay their rent. We have classified employees who have tried and tried to move up the career ladder within LACC employment, but are met with disappointment time and time again. We have departments that continue to be understaffed and classified employees who are overworked and underpaid, but remain loyal to the institution. These are the voices of the very people that elected you into your seats. Please continue to give them the consideration they deserve and put actions behind your words. So in closing, on behalf of AFT 1521A, we wish everyone a happy holiday and may everyone be healthy and surrounded by your loved ones during this festive season. Thank you all and see you in 2023.
Thank you so much, Ms. Alonso. Appreciate your comments. Um, anyone else from the resource table, any of our stakeholders? Okay, anyone online? Yes, all right. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Is that Chavati? I'd see your hand.
Hi, everybody. Uh, first of all, I want to congratulate the new officers, uh, president Vella and vice presidents, Michelle Henderson and Kelsey Eno. Uh, I wish you the very best. Um, and I also would like to thank trustee Moreno for his many decades of leadership and service to the LA Community College District. I also want to thank former president, uh, trustee Buena for being so student-focused and for working with faculty to serve all students and in particular, to help us push back against some of the legislative efforts that are impacting our system. It is great to see that the gender diversity of the current board is more representative of our student population, especially in light of some of the recent challenges and press that the district has weathered in the area of gender equity. Moving forward, it is very important to include gender equity in the board's framework for racial equity and social justice. I want to thank my faculty colleagues for their tireless work and exemplary dedication to our students during this really tough three-year pandemic that we've all gone through. And one of the major challenges that we're gonna face collectively is how to serve all students after unprecedented legislative intrusion into curriculum. As you all know, we've lost about a quarter of our students in spite of the fact that we're spending millions of dollars to attract and bring in new students. Legislative intrusion and restriction imposed by AB 1705, AB 928 and other bills will make it very challenging and difficult for us to serve all students in our communities. Unfortunately, as faculty, we have become keenly aware of the importance of legislative advocacy moving forward. And we look forward to partnering with the unions, the board and anyone else who will help us fight on behalf of our students. I really feel that the mission of our system is at risk at this point. And looking at the resolution that is on today's agenda regarding AB 928, that's just one example of how our students are being impacted with some of this misguided legislative intrusion. In spite of that fact, I'm very optimistic that moving forward, we will be able to ensure that our students are served to the best of our abilities. So I, I pledged my commitment to working with all of you to that effect. In conclusion, again, I want to congratulate all the board members who are reelected, our new officers. I want to wish everyone a happy holidays and a wonderful new year. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chavati. Really appreciate your comments. Um, yes, I think we have Ms. Harrington on the internet.
Good afternoon, Presidente Vella.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
The titles keep coming, Dean Harrington.
Uh, so good afternoon, members of the board and chancellor Rodriguez. For the record, I am Deborah Harrington. I'm the acting president of Teamsters, representing our district deans. Um, so on behalf of our u- our unit, I, I really want to extend our congratulations to our newly elected as well as our reelected trustees. And we would also like to thank trustee Moreno for his decades of service to the LACC and wish him the best. And I do want to say on a personal note, um, as a, a out and proud member of LGBTQ and as a woman, uh, what an amazing sight this is. I've been in the district a really long time, uh, since 1996. And indeed, I will uh, affirm what trustee Henderson has said. This, this is the most diverse, particularly in terms of, of females on this board. Uh, and I'm, and I'm glad to see that balance back in the board. No offense to uh, my gentlemen colleagues, but uh, happy to see it. Our unit uh, joins the board in affirming our commitment to the preservation of lifelong learning, self-development and kinesiology, and are ready to assist in, in planning and advocacy efforts in retaining these vital educational opportunities for California community. We also pleased to report that uh, the Teamsters had a great turnout for our fall membership meeting. And I want to thank our fellow Teamsters for a very robust discussion of their most pressing concerns. Amongst them are uh, compensation, workload, uh, many things that you will hear about in, in the coming year. Um, and our negotiations team will be sunshining the articles we would like to open next month. And we look forward to meeting with management and coming to a new agreement by the end of the spring semester. I'd like to close in appreciation of all of us. It, it's been uh, another year of challenges, but I'm heartened by the good work in support of student access, success, equity and completion uh, performed every day by the educational prof- professionals of the LACC. May you all have a blessed holiday season full of joy, health and love. I just want to say 2023 and LACC adelante. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dean Harrington. Really appreciate your comments. Um, anyone else online? Are we good? All right, good. All right, um, next up, um, the, we have received the chancellor's monthly report, which includes activity from the colleges and from the college presidents. However, we're lucky to have our college presidents here in person, a lot of them. So I offer you our um, ability to speak to us here. Thank you so much. President Gallagher, representing LA City College. I like the festive mood.
Thank you, board president Vella. Um, I want to congratulate you um, as president of our board. Um, it has been great. Um, president Vella and I uh, served on a board some years ago. And it's been great to see your growth in leadership. So that's wonderful. And congratulations to the other permanent board members. Uh, and uh, thank you so much for your services as well, former board president Buena. Um, I uh, am enthusiastic to tell you a couple of things that have happened at City uh, very recently. We had a uh, very large Quanza festival last Thursday. We had hundreds of people in our quad. Uh, and we all gathered together to appreciate uh, the Quanza festival and what it means to not just our black and African-American community, but just as, as a community of, of the whole of us at LA City College. And then on Monday, we had a large event with over 40 employers and community partners uh, to uh, get together with us to help us to understand what their needs are for career technical education. And they really appreciated the opportunity to come together with us and to express what they're looking for and what their needs are. And finally, um, president Romano and I joined forces last Thursday and we hosted uh, almost 300 presidents from LA. almost three hundred presidents from L A U S D East at L A City College, but we joined forces to work together so that L A U S D East sees us in strong partnership to help them and to help their students. And just as an aside, Superintendent Huerta has a hundred seventy thousand students in L A U S D East. That is a force. There are school districts throughout the state that are not as large as that, so we're very proud to be serving. Thank you.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much, President Gallagher. Next up, President Ornellus with Mission College. Just kind of got to go down the list.
Good afternoon. Congratulations, President Vella, on your election. Congratulations, Trustee Henderson, Trustee Eno. Welcome, Trustee Hernandez. Great to have you on the board. And thank you, President Bueno, outgoing President Bueno, for your service. Congratulations, Trustee Vettis, for your reelection as well. And I'm happy to provide some updates from L A Mission College. And I'll start off by saying that we're really proud that we're able to close out a holiday drive, a giveaway, donation drive on campus where our Eagles Essentials, our basic needs, was able to sponsor seventy-two students and their families, which is great in terms of providing, you know, whether it was clothing, food, essentials to get through the holidays, which we're really proud of. We were also able to participate as a college in the Pacoima Parade this past weekend. We had almost fifty participants from the campus community, students, faculty, staff, administrators, which is which is wonderful. It's a lot of fun to represent the college and the community. And we also sponsored our annual biotech exhibition, which is a great opportunity for us to showcase our student research in biotechnology. Our faculty have wonderful partnerships with industry, including Senior Sanai, Amgen, Grifols, all present to support our our students. And they, you know, they're ready to pick up our students. They they hire them after taking two classes with us, which is great. And I will also share that beginning next semester, we're joining many of our colleges in the Carrying Campus Initiative, so Mission College will also be a part of the Carrying Campus. And finally, we continue to have our enrollment events. We had our last one for the fall last week, but beginning the second week of winter, we'll continue with both virtual and in-person wraparound enrollment events where students are able to get everything in a one-stop model, whether applying, counseling, financial aid, the entire process. So, thank you, and feliz Navidad.
Feliz Navidad. Next, President, come on up.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
And congratulations to all of you guys. Thank you. Thank you for your service. President Bueno, thank you for your leadership last year for all that. And President Vella, we look forward to following your lead. Today, I want to give you a few updates about what Harbor College is up to. So last weekend, two weekends ago, we unveiled our Harbor College truck that we took through the community events. So we went to the San Pedro Holiday Parade. That truck was a celebrity. We went to the Wilmington Holiday Parade this Sunday. That truck was a celebrity. So I'll be bringing it. So if you see me driving in the Harbor Seahawk truck here to campus to the district, don't get scared. I'm just recruiting. That's what it's all about, reengaging our community and bringing them back. Speaking of reengaging our community, we're also reengaging our faculty and staff. We had our holiday mixer this past Thursday where we had the ugly sweater contest. We're going to retire the ugly sweater contest, and we're going to go to a lip sync competition amongst our staff and faculty. You're welcome to come and compete. It could be solo or it could be a group. We also had our foundation holiday mixer where we raised funds for scholarships for students. And so we're still tallying the funds to make sure that they all go to scholarships. So we continue to do that. We also had Hawaiian Elementary School. We had six hundred students from Hawaiian Elementary. They came and they saw Alice in Wonderland. Half of them were in our theater because we only had the capacity less than three hundred. So the other half was in our multipurpose room, eating pizza from our culinary arts program. So then they switched. So it was an awesome sight. Let me just tell you, the staff was tired. And we said, thank you, thank you to all the teachers that were there. We understood how they felt. We also had our Care Cow Works holiday celebration where we celebrated our single parents for everything that they go through day in and day out. Not only did we give gifts to their kids, we also gave them a gift. So we gifted the whole family. Thanks to all the wonderful donations from our faculty, staff, and our community. So thank you to all of them. We also celebrate our first generation student celebration. It's important to celebrate because a lot of us are first in the family. And I was very proud. I'm always proud. But today, it really shows that those shoulders of those giants that we stand on are getting broader and broader. So thank you for that. We're in the community doing, in the high schools, doing our early decision FAFSA workshops. We're in the high schools doing them both in English and in Spanish. So we continue to connect with our local high schools. Tomorrow, I invite you to our one hundred nineteenth nursing pending ceremony. We have been sending nurses into the community since nineteen sixty-three. Recently, Harbor College was named number one in the nursing program for community colleges. And yes. And of course, that's attributed to all our wonderful faculty that make that a program and also the fact that our students pass their tests at a high rate, and we have a hundred percent job placement. Yes. So now, we like to say at Harbor College that not only do we educate the community, we take care of it. And so next year, next academic year, we'll be celebrating seventy-five years of educating the heart of the community. So I welcome you to our celebrations. More to come. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Bravo. Really appreciate that report. Interim President Culpepper, come on up, Southwest College.
Thank you, President Bueno. Vella, Vella, Vella. Congratulations, congratulations.
That's the one thing you can never call me.
Congratulations. And thank you, President Bueno, for your leadership. It is certainly a wonderful transition as we do see the board diversifying in many ways. Want to appreciate Trustee Henderson and also Eno for your appointments as new officers on the board. For those who are now elected, reelected, certainly it is a pleasure to see you back engaging the L A C C C, L A C C D board. Want to share a few things that are happening at Southwest College. We are extremely happy about the B R N program, our nursing program, if you will, that has been reappointed, reapproved as the as a registered nursing program for five years. And so we we have been able to accomplish that. Certainly want to give all the appreciation to Dr. Azabuke and the other wonderful faculty members that are working with her through that program. Looking forward to some of the recommendations that were made by the B R N. They, in fact, expressed to us that they would look forward to us expanding the nursing program and inviting more students to be involved in the program. So not that we're competing with Los Angeles Harbor College, but we did get that recommendation. We also want to remind you that we are reengaging our community in many different ways. We have been reintroducing ourselves to the community. We've been bridging our partnerships with the various K through twelve high schools and other organizations. We're now expanding that into the faith-based organizations that are in our community to ensure that they are aware of Southwest College and what we provide for the community in terms of a valuable education, a high-quality education in the community. We look forward to continuing to engage our business community. We hosted them this past November. Looking forward to continuing to build those relationships with them as they see the the valuable from home to work opportunities that Southwest College offers. We are certainly continuing to expand our reach into the the various areas where we have the Boys and Girls Club and also the Y M C A. We are taking as many bites of the apple as we possibly can as we continue to look at the needs that our community has for our college. One of the things that we really are focused on this this coming year is to reimagine our target marketing. We have some ideas on how to take Southwest brand and really saturate our community. We're looking at bus tails, putting the cougar eyes on the back of the bus routes that go through the community so that whenever whenever someone stops at a stoplight, whenever they see the back of a bus, they're going to see the the cougar logo along with taglines, taglines such as focus on your future. Southwest College is the the place to be to change your life. And all these types of taglines, there are many that we are thinking about. And certainly, we'll be putting QR codes on the back of it so that not only are we sharing information about the the success of Southwest College and how they can be successful, but we're also going to be gathering information from them so we can build a database to continue to reach out to them. So these are the things that are happening at Southwest College. We're thankful that we were able to serve two hundred and fifty families this past November. Thanksgiving, we were able to give out food, and they were all over the campus. Cars were all through the lots. And we gave out everything. And so we were certainly thankful that we were able to serve the community in that way. Lastly, I will share with you something that you were, you may recall that when you provided me the opportunity to be the interim president, I was working on my Juris Doctorate degree. That Juris Doctorate degree is now done. I appreciate that. Thank you.
That's going to be a hard act to follow, Dr. Aguiar. I don't know if you have another PhD coming.
No, not a PhD. It's great to be here and seeing the faces is just a great experience. Again, I really missed the the hugs. Congratulations, Board of Trustee Members, and certainly President Vella. It's great to be here. Well, not that I'm in competition with my colleagues, but let me just brag a little bit about our nursing program at Piers.
I actually like this competition.
Right? Well, our nursing program is considered seven is in the top seventeen percent in the state. However, it did beat both the undergraduate and graduate scores of UCLA, UCSF, and CSUN. So we we got a we've got a trend going here. We are very happy at Piers. We've been able to serve this entire finals week breakfast and lunch for all of our students. We've started a closet, a career closet. Our Super Sunday this last week in the rain, lots of people in the parking lot bringing toys. It was mountains of baseballs and soccer balls. It was it was amazing. So it was really a great experience to to have. Our college promise students are persistence rate is at seventy percent. They have all continued into spring. So we're very happy. Over twelve hundred students right now in our college promise program. We also are pursuing two apprenticeships in for child development and for automotive. It's a new state initiative, so it will be a new program for peers. And our numbers for Cal Works, E O P S, Guardian Scholars, Foster Youth, next up, are all at pre-pandemic numbers. So that that's a great outcome for for our college. And we just received a small grant, forty thousand for our foster youth students. Additionally, we continue to build our dual enrollment with L A U S D and expanding with magnet schools and charter schools. And last but not least, we are bringing women's softball to Piers. Starting next season. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Aguiar. Next up, interim President Burke. Come on up.
Good afternoon. Congratulations, newly elected board leadership. And the new and continuing board members, thank you all for your leadership for the district and our students. Just to highlight a few recent events at the college. On November seventh, Trade Tax Construction Maintenance and Utilities Pathway hosted a Women in Construction event. The day began with a welcome to the C M U students from Trustee Hoffman and remarks from Habitat for L A's impressive largely female leadership team. The program was followed by a tour of the C M U building and capped off with a lunch where the where the women's C M U students were able to ask questions directly of the Habitat leadership. It was a fantastic day to foster leadership and growth for the future of women, a theme we've heard here today in relationship to our own board and in construction. We'd like to thank our C M U instructor Nicole Jordan for putting that event together. Every year, Trade Tax Culinary Arts Pathway receives fresh ingredients from our neighbors at the St. Francis Center. And our students turn that into a meal for the annual Thanksgiving feast. The feast took place the day before Thanksgiving on November twenty-third, where we served two hundred and thirty-five meals to guests in need. So it's a great combination both for our students and the communities we serve. And then finally, last Friday night, we had our Fall Twenty-two Gold Thimble Fashion Show. Hosted featuring designs from the program's graduating class in eight categories. This biannual event, the theme this year was Madonna's reign, celebrating the legacy and life and work of the pop culture icon. And then in terms of our enrollment efforts, our spring open house will happen Saturday, February fourth from nine to one in our North Quad, where students will have the opportunity to explore the pathways and get help with enrollment. Thank you.
That's awesome. By the way, big Madonna fan here. I'm sure it's obvious. Me too. Good job.
I always thought you were a Hello Kitty.
President Gribbins, all the way from Valley College.
Good afternoon. Top-ranked nursing program, Valley College. Nursing pending ceremony tomorrow at four o'clock at Monarch Hall. Hope you can join us. The mission team and Valley team have been doing some amazing work on outreach as well. On Monday, we had some conversations. As you all know, L A Unified is reorganizing. It's exciting in the Valley because the Valley is kind of unified, unifying into one local district, local district north. So President Ornellus and my team has been doing some great job, great work with local district northeast. Now we get to fold into Piers team and local district northwest in the large organization. So that includes, as you might recall, College Fest. On October twelfth, we started out connecting with every high school senior, every high school senior, helping to explain to them financial aid and how they can pay for college, then working with every one of them to complete their FAFSA or California Dream Act applications. Now we're focused on bringing in the families. So we're going to be hosting all the families, both at Mission College and at Valley College. So each of a local middle schools and high schools will be busing families to the respective height, to the respective colleges. So that's exciting. We're helping them along the way, complete their college application. And then we'll help them enroll with college days at the colleges as well as at the local high school sites. So it's an amazing, comprehensive approach, very high touch. We've never seen anything like this, but certainly not during the pandemic. And of course, we're already seeing the impact of the efforts last year, which were terrific. But this year is taking it up several notches on top of it. So deeply appreciative of all the local high school partners for for those efforts. We, like everybody, have a lot of amazing celebrations going on right now. Yesterday was a big holiday party. Tomorrow's kinesiology holiday party, which is always a wonderful and one not to miss. On Friday, I'm going to be meeting with President Romano and President Ornellus with United Way. United Way's expressed an interest in providing a lot of support for Valley Mission and East, helping to expand dual enrollment efforts, making sure everybody has access to them. And most importantly, not just getting kids into dual enrollment programs, but getting them to complete dual enrollment programs. So a lot of exciting efforts there. We're appreciative of United Way's efforts. Lastly, I'll just close out by acknowledging the Operation Santa efforts. Many of you know Josh Miller, our old our our former, he's not that old, our former academic senate president, who's been leading Operation Santa efforts at Valley College for many, many years. This year, we have sixty-five families that have been adopted, over two hundred kids. All of them have been taken care of with the president, so we're excited to be able to continue to do that for the community. Thank you.
President Gribbins, I just wanted to quickly say that I attended the LGBT Holiday Mixer at your college, and it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, yeah, I've missed it because I was sick, but I heard it was absolutely amazing. We're so excited about the Rainbow Pride Center in our.
Very, very fun. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
President Romano, you still at the college?
Good afternoon, President Vella. Feels nice to say that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulations to all trustees that were reelected. Welcome, Trustee Hernandez. Pleasure to have you here. What a wonderful-looking board. I agree with my colleagues. You know, I'm a Madonna fan too. Probably not as obvious, huh? But I am. But I am. Um, nursing, what I'm gonna have to challenge my colleagues here. We're also having a nursing uh, pending uh, ceremony on Friday. Trustee Vela, you were there uh, last year. Uh, always open. It's a great time really to honor and affirm all of the hard work of our students. And again, sending them off to their journey to uh, be employed as nurses in our community. So if you're able to make it, three o'clock uh, this Friday for the pending ceremony. Uh, we're doing uh, Pan con Cafecito. Uh, we're doing these tables in the quad of East LA College. As students are coming out, we're connecting with them about enrollment. In particular, we're pushing our winter enrollment and spring uh, enrollment as well. And we're also doing classroom presentations. I've actually gotten myself into several classes the last couple of weeks, really to talk to students to make sure that they're continuing their education. The bottom line is, we want students to not take a break because oftentimes what we find is when they take that one break, it becomes a second break, a third break, and then we lose them. So our retention, if you look across the board, is not where we want it to be. So these classroom presentations really help us engage with students and emphasize the importance of continuing their education. VPAM, as it was mentioned already, we had a wonderful um, district-wide event where we had students from eight, eight of our colleges uh, with their projects and exhibitions. Again, President Vela, Vela, la buena. Thank you for being there. Uh, I understand uh, uh, your sister, if I could say it, was a participant. Uh, and uh, it was a great event. Again, the first one we've had where we've had students from the entire district participate uh, in, in our VPAM uh, exhibition for students. For those of you that are basketball fans, Last Chance You Season Two was released yesterday. So uh, please watch it, binge it. If, if you haven't uh, already, it's been released. And uh, you'll see really the reality and the rawness of what our student athletes go through to continue their education and uh, the struggles, as many of you know, that our students face. Um, it's a wonderful series and we're very excited that uh, Eli got highlighted again. On sports also, Eli will be launching for the first time a women's wrestling team. This will be the first one. Yes, it will be the first one for LACCD, I think, for a region. Uh, we are excited about launching. Uh, our students are already training and we're hoping uh, obviously that we'll be in, in, in the spring uh, competing with other teams. I think there's gonna be about twelve to fourteen of us in the state that are launching a women's wrestling program. So we're excited that Eli will be part of that process. And, and lastly, thank you to those of you that were at the gala on December the second. Uh, it was a, a great event, honoring very powerful influential women. Uh, but more importantly, really raising funds for uh, scholarships for our students. Uh, the event went very well. We sold out about a month in advance of the event. And uh, we're looking at a bigger venue next year. Uh, we had four hundred plus folks there. Trustees, again, thank you for being there and supporting uh, East LA College and our students. That's on that note, happy holidays to everybody, wishing you the very best. Uh, make sure you take that break and uh, come back rejuvenated in, in January of twenty twenty-three. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much, President Roman. Really appreciate um, your comments. Um, at this time, we're gonna go ahead um, and move on to item G, public comment. Are there any persons signed up to address the Board of Trustees regarding regular gen items?
Jim Limbaugh's online for presentation. President Limbaugh, we're gonna hear him first. President Limbaugh. Go ahead, sir.
Remember me, trustee Vela?
Yes, oh, we can hear you now.
Boy, boy, I see how it works out of sight and out of mind. I see how this works.
We, we, we missed you tremendously. I was wondering, I'm like, where is he?
Well, I have to uh, extend my apologies. I'm recuperating from knee surgery. So I will be back in January and we can all jog around the block together. So uh, first, I know I speak for all of West LA College when I say thank you to each of you for your leadership. And I'm just welcome, trustee Eno. I'm so glad you're, you're now here on a more permanent basis. So um, let me give you a little bit about what's happening at West. First, we're slowly building our enrollment. Uh, we were hit pretty hard at, in, in the pandemic due to our online program. We're slowly bringing it back. And I'm gonna buck the trend. I do not have a nursing program to brag about. But I have the number one baccalaureate program in the state and with our dental hygiene program, a hundred percent placement rate. So I figure that will trade off for the, for, for the uh, nursing program. We're working on opening the California Center for Climate Change Education, which is a result of a five million dollar uh, appropriation that Temple Rodriguez and Assembly Member Brian worked together to bring to West. We'll be having a grand opening of that in the spring. We're really excited about the level of work that's going on in campus. We're tearing down twelve buildings, completely worked in the middle of the campus so that the entire campus will be fully transformed into a real center for education. And we'll also be using it to focus on climate change initiatives. In terms of community partnerships, because of our location, we have great access to the entertainment industry. So right now, we're working on a program with Sony to create a production accounting program. And we're expanding our uh, apprenticeships into the allied health field. In terms of the additional work in bachelor's degrees, please know that we're, we're submitting our second bachelor's degree in avionics. That'll be going forward in January. And in tandem with that, we've begun partnership or begun discussions with the leadership at Los Angeles World Airways to develop a special partnership between our aviation program and uh, LAX. We're very excited about that. And finally, um, we're continuing the important work that we've been doing in student success that led West to be named one of Aspen's top hundred and fifty institutions in the country. And trustee Hernandez, I'm saying, I'm letting you know that because we're very proud of that at West. The other folks here are aware of that, but, but we have those banners proudly. And so this is an invitation, trustee Hernandez, trustee Eno, come to campus to see our new building, to see our new film and TV production building, which is the only uh, fully functioning soundstage in any American community college campus, I think you'll be pleased. So thank you for the time. Again, I'll see you in person and best wishes for the holiday season.
Thank you so much, President Limbaugh. Um, okay, I think that's all the presidents, right? Alright, let's go ahead and move on. Um, are there any persons signed up to address uh, the regular gen items?
Yes, sir. We have four individuals and they're speaking on item I one, AB nine-two-eight resolution, and they're on Zoom. They're on Zoom right now. Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the first one. That's Ms. Harkins. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, Tracy Harkins, Department Chair of Health and Human Performance at Los Angeles Mission College. Welcome new board members and thank you to all of our board members for your support of the importance of lifelong learning classes for students. Trustee Hoffman, thank you for presenting the resolution in item I one, which is an important step to best serve students. This is a complex issue and I'd be happy to engage in further discussion, but assuming this resolution passes as the board looks to work with the Intersegmental Committee on the Implementation of AB nine-twenty-eight and the ASC, please be aware of the following. This statewide survey that was conducted in the development of Cal Getzi is invalid as it pertains to the area of lifelong learning. This survey did not include a field for input from faculty and students about lifelong learning and rather listed the removal of this area as a foregone conclusion without even a field for feedback. And this was the tool that was supposed to gather student and faculty input on the development of Cal Getzi. Furthermore, if an entire area was to be excluded from general education, disciplined faculty from all disciplines within that area should have been specifically consulted and included in discussions to help inform decisions. This did not occur. ICIS meetings to develop Cal Getzi were closed meetings. Community college administrators and management, including those familiar with special programs, funding and sustainability, athletics, et cetera, also should have been consulted and included in these discussions for consideration of the potential impacts of Cal Getzi to student opportunities, services, and the communities we serve. It is important to be aware of the impacts of lifelong learning courses for transfer students, all students, the broader community and public health. The effects of equity, including, or the effects on equity, including health equity, opportunities and support for underserved and underrepresented students, student opportunities in athletics, impacts to guided pathways and ADTs, and the fact that removing health and physical education from requirements and access would constitute an implementation of institutional racism and damage equity. Due diligence did not occur and ICIS members must have been aware, unaware of these factors at the time they proposed Cal Getzi, given that the removal of lifelong learning is contrary to the stated goals, values, initiatives, and the purpose of community colleges and higher education as a whole. Excluding lifelong learning from Cal Getzi and general requirements has serious consequences. The unintended damages are not an acceptable oversight and our students should not have to pay the price. This needs to be resolved for the sake of our students and communities. Thank you for this resolution and working together with us towards a solution and the inclusion of lifelong learning in requirements to support equity and student success. Proper study and consultation needs to occur, which should be recommended to the.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Harkins. Really appreciate your comments. Next up is Doris Kaufman. You can unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. This is a statement on agenda item I one or one-one regarding AB nine-twenty-eight. My name is Doris Kaufman. I've been an adjunct faculty in the community college system since nineteen ninety-eight in kinesiology and health. I want to say hello to the board members and to our college presidents who were there today, uh, who are here today. It's pretty neat to listen to you and receive reports um, in that manner. This is about the removal of lifelong learning requirements as a blow to educational equity and it creates further disparity for Black and Latinx students in LACCD. Removing the Area E requirement that includes health and physical activity classes is a major blow to both equity and especially for disparity students. It is contrary to the goals of guided pathways and if implemented will be, will simply widen both the equity gaps and the disparity gaps that exist for underrepresented students, particularly in the area of health equity and disparity, which can quickly and dramatically derail students from academic goals and deter them from their educational pathways. We have national data that tells us this. It's growing daily in California and across the United States. This accumulation of data. The effects of this should have been thoroughly studied uh, and disciplined faculty should have been consulted before this decision was made. Uh, we need to correct this decision. We need to go back and revisit it. Research consistently documents the benefits of physical activity for mental health and physical health, stress management, cognitive performance, sleep quality, reduction of stress for the major disease groups, CVD, cancer, et cetera, diabetes. The COVID pandemic has in fact exacerbated these health problems for all students as well as the general population. The data keeps pouring in in this regard as well, both in California and nationally. The health and performance benefits are vital to support our student success and help students to stay on the path in their academic programs. Yet students don't need only specifically to have the benefit of participating in physical activity. What's really core here is the loss of the opportunity to learn how, in other words, how to move, perform, um, rehabilitate properly, safely, and effectively. Even high-performance athletes have to have rehabilitation and follow prescribed programs. So when we're learning physical movement, we need to follow some prescribed program movements to learn how to do it safely and well. This really can't be compared to merely going to uh, you know, to a lab or going to a gym. Uh, would you replace a chemistry class? Yes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kaufman. Really appreciate your comments. Next up is uh, Ms. Nancy Cairns. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak at this critically important time. Congratulations to the new members. Woohoo, ladies! I'm so grateful for you, but I thank you gentlemen for your service. Thank you, thank you. Um, I hope you'll bring positive change on the item I'm speaking on today. My name is Nancy Cairns and after twenty-four years of teaching health and kin, and I won't date one of the presidents from the college who hired me. Uh, thank you. I'm still here, still wanting to support our students. Um, both in person and virtually. As one of the distance education pioneers for LA City College, I know the impact that health and kinesiology classes have on our at-risk population of students. AB nine-twenty-eight legislation takes away a critically important component of our student population's academic and personal success, and I'm sure that you will agree with me. Removing a requirement for health education and movement courses from the transfer requirement should be the very last thing on the list. But I prefer to let our students' voices be heard. On a voluntary survey, students were asked, do you think that it is important and valuable for students to take an academic course in health, dance, or physical activity as part of their requirements for general education or graduation? The results are included in the documents I sent you this at AM. I hope you had a chance to review them. This survey has been open for only one week and currently uh, is being given to our health and kin dance course students. Over four hundred and eighty-five responses so far, of which ninety-five point eight percent saying yes, this needs to be a requirement. So let me be clear that our students are very much opposed. Why, you might ask? Well, here's what the students' surveys say. Was it different from their health in all their other courses, but that they got from their health and kin classes? My other courses contributed to high stress levels this semester, but none of them offered a guide on how to manage it, which is necessary, necessary to succeed in them. Another student, all of our, all the other courses required endless hours of sitting in class or in front of a screen, a known risk to health. Kinesiology classes are the only ones that provide a much-needed balance and effective stress relief. Thanks to this class, I'm able to sit down pain-free for long amounts of time to work on other on-campus courses. I think the most valuable thing about this course is that it values opinions and your ability to express them. The freedom to do so is a sigh of relief. There are over four hundred and fifty self-written responses on how our courses so far support these current students in these surveys. I need the board to take action. Stand up for our students and this district and go to your influential friends and modify legislation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cairns. Um, next up is Ms. Phyllis Eckler. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you. I want to thank you. I want to thank you, the Board of Trustees of this district, for supporting through this resolution. Our, I, the, the problems we're having and acknowledging the problems we're having with AB nine-twenty-eight and the way the new Cal Getzi has been put together. I'm a, an adjunct faculty member in kinesiology and also teach dance. And I want to mention that everyone in our department is enjoying and happy to be there. And you can hear it from what Ms. Karen said about the survey results. Everyone deserves access to education and health and physical activity to promote their wellness, which in turn helps our students stay on their educational paths. Many of my students, including international students and students who are new to college, find that lifelong learning courses such as kinesiology activity classes provide them an entryway into college culture and community. I've noticed that as first-generation college students, international students in English, language learners engage in activities such as yoga, dance, or even basketball, they begin to understand not only more about their bodies, safety, but the benefits of movement. They also understand about academic standards, how to engage in teamwork, and the language of American higher education. Excluding this requirement from Cal Getzi would disadvantage our students and communities and disproportionately affect groups, including English language learners, as well as Los Angeles's lower-income population. Removing health, psychology, and kinesiology activities from requirements would only widen equity gaps. Thank you for your help. Through this resolution, it will make it an requirement. This is what we're striving for, a requirement within Cal Getzi that students take these important lifelong learning courses. And thank you so much for everything you do for this district.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your concerns. Um, if see no more um, public comment on agenda items, I think we're done with that. We'll go ahead and close that portion. At this time, I'll go ahead and um, hear from reports from the board on their committees. Let's go ahead and uh, if you're ready, Ms. Vice President Henderson. Vice President Henderson, for the, let's see, Institutional Effective and Student Success Committee that you had on November sixteen.
Yes, sir. The Institutional Effectiveness and Student Success Committee. We met virtually on November sixteenth at four P M. with Trustee Veris in attendance. The committee was presented with three college enrollment, recruitment, and marketing reports. The first was from L A City College. President Mary Gallagher and her team discussed the college's enrollment, switch points, academic initiatives, and game design, the Change Three Sixty Initiative, the R E S J Cultural Events, Zero-Cost Textbooks, Mesa Program Implementation coming in twenty twenty-three, outreach initiatives such as the branding of You Matter Here advertising. All to address four, three major, four major issues of a student-centered funding formula. The second presentation was from L A Valley College. President Barry Gribbins and his team reported, reported on the increase in dual enrollment and headcount numbers due to new offerings in general education and career programming to support dual enrollment program students. The college's outreach, engagement, and recruitment efforts to include fast flow support, onsite enrollment assistance, and a call center. Equity initiatives include the Mosaic Center, Mosaic Village, or the Unity Center that houses the Dream Resource Center, Umoja Black Scholars Program, Veterans Resource Center, the Puente Program, and the recently opened Rainbow Pride Center. The final college report was from Los Angeles Mission College. President Armita Arnalas and her team discussed a pleasing increase in enrollment and dual enrollment and adult education programs due to one-stop enrollment events, enhanced course offerings, a new case management model, and the addition of services for students such as a basic need center, extended counseling hours, and a Rising Scholars Reentry Hub. I'd like to thank these presidents for their efforts and give kudos to those presidents, presidents that are seeing even moderate increases in enrollment due to their willingness to think outside of the box to intentionally address the enrollment declines that have plagued our colleges over a decade. I believe that if we see some significant increases in enrollment, we are seeing them because of collective work done to meet the current and the current, the need of current students and prospective students where they are and as they are. So, Mr. President, so is my report.
Thank you so much, Vice President Henderson. Trustee Hoffman, can you please summarize the proceedings of the Budget and Finance Committee that you chaired recently on December seventh? Thank you.
Yes, I can. Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank my colleagues, trustees, Henderson and Eno for being available to have a special Budget and Finance Committee meeting on the morning of December seventh. We were presented with the annual financial audit and the bond financial audit. The audits were both unmodified, so they had unmodified opinions, which is really, really good. So congratulations to us. And today I am recommending that, or the committee is recommending that we accept the audits that are coming to the board in the consent calendar. And we also received the first quarter financial report, which is three eleven Q as an information item. It was a very smooth, quick meeting. We had two presentations. So I want to thank our presenters for those presentations and hope to have your support through the consent calendar today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Trustee Hoffman. Appreciate you guys doing that for the end of the year. Student Trustee Callahan, do you want to go ahead and summarize the proceedings of the Student Affairs Committee that you chaired on both November eighteenth and December ninth? Thank you.
Yep. Okay, on December ninth. So we had a pretty normal SAC committee for the ninth, but some of the things that came out of that committee was the passing of AP fifteen, or not fifteen, five, four twenty, which was a revision made by the Community College Leagues on how the Associated Student finances are managed. And the, we also agreed on, or we also passed the amendments to board policies two fifteen and to one oh five, which are both board policies relating to the student trustee position. These amendments are to account for adding two additional seats and changing the student trustee position to a regional student trustee position, breaking the regions into three specific regions. The Valor Region, which would be covering Mission College, Pierce College, Valley College, the City Region, which would be covering Trade Tech, East City, and the West Region, which would be West, Southwest, and Harbor College. The amendments are basically stating that if we were to pass this and change the board policies for the student trustee, we will have effectively three student trustee seats that will all be serving for the district. Each seat will be covering a specific section of the, of our district. And these, I basically came up with these amendments based off of my experience struggling to, you know, show equal support for all the student bodies at each of our colleges. And I noticed that at least within some of our recent student trustees, they've been more of like East L A and City students, and I feel like there's not as much representation on our board from those colleges specifically. So these amendments are just giving not, not just more of a supportive network to the student trustee position in general, having another set of leaders helping them out with all their ambitions for the board. But it will also be giving another opportunity for students beyond some of our larger colleges in the district to have a say and position on the board. These are just amendments to the actual seats and the actual, the election, the elections for the student trustee position. These do not account for any of the other policies or board policies or administrative policies that also include the student trustee positions. So this is something that's, it's going to be. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done as far as when it's passed, there's a lot of other policies that do need to be changed and revised based off of these recommendations. But it has received unanimous support from our student body presidents. And going forward, I look forward to working more on this and creating more equity for the student trustee position. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
Thank you so much, Student Trustee Callahan, for your report. I'll go ahead while Trustee Buena is gathering information on the FIMPOC committee that he chaired while I was out sick. I'll go ahead and go over our Legislative and Public Affairs Committee. We had a pretty robust committee went over our federal elections report. That was kind of what was pressing at that meeting. Essentially, as you all saw, there was a balance of power that had not been determined in the Senate, in the U S Senate. But we're happy to report that there is a bipartisan effort in D C to actually continue to approve the federal line item budget request, which is something that, you know, was a good bipartisan thing that D C is still going to be implementing for next year. So we're happy about that. We also went ahead and did a state elections report, as you all saw. That was also increasingly important with new jurisdictions that affect LACC D in our service area. So those were also discussed. And then I'm sure I don't have to remind you of how important the local elections were with, you know, one of our largest elections we've ever had locally. There was a large young voter turnout, and what was interesting was that really set the tone for our newly sworn-in first African-American female mayor of Los Angeles. So we look forward to working with her. And I also want to congratulate our chancellor, who's going to be serving on her transition team. Congratulations. Good job. It's good for us. So those were just some of the things. We also highlighted again, all of the state possible legislation. So I encourage you, if you haven't already spoken to Ms. Velos about those ideas, please go ahead and contact her. But that's it for our Public Affairs and Legislature Committee. It was just, it was very robust, and we spoke a lot about everything. Trustee Weller, do you want to go ahead and do two reports? One is on the Ad Hoc Committee for Action on Teaching Learning Barriers for Non-Linguistic Speaking, and then also the FIMPOC that you chaired when I was sick. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you very much. So with regard to the Committee on Monolingual Language, the enrollment on the pilot classes began on December fifth. I believe all the classes are, have enough to, to go in terms of the contract. The chancellor is going to go over the specific numbers, but we're at thirty-three percent enrollment, I think, I think as of this morning. So enrollment is going well in those classes. We went over the fact that we had, we, Chancellor, myself, and Mariabelos, and a few, and the, the group who did the poll on monolingual learning were present in Sacramento, oh, no, in San Francisco for a presentation. We had a very good presentation. What was interesting about the, the lead presentation is that you had a lot of, at least around twenty folks. Dr. Merelas was, was present. Thank you very much. Our, our, our super G C Medina was present. Thank you very much. We had, L C W Meredith was also there. A lot of the colleges were, were, were happy that LACC D is doing a pilot, that we're doing analysis, that we're doing a poll, that we're doing assessment. Because there, what a lot of them essentially said was, was a lot of us have tried to do this and people have shut us down before. And they, it was interesting in talking about enrollment. So there was a lot of energy in, in the room, even though the league put us at eight o'clock in the morning, literally the worst time slot in the history of the planet. But even though under those conditions, we still thrived and we're, and we're, and we're, and we're present. So thank you for that. Chancellor was there. Oh, Trustee Eno was president. Trustee, I mean, was president. Hopefully, you'll be president one day. Trustee Henderson wa, was president. We had an excellent presentation on that. Anything else, Chancellor, on that? I mean, it's obviously you were.
It was excellent.
Yeah, thank you. And the chancellor is going to go further on, on how the pilot project is going. With regard to FIMPOC, we went over, we thanked a lot of the folks. We went over the, the bond and went over everyone who kind of made that happen. We had different presentations. Trustee Hoffman, you, you were, you were there. It was just you and I. We went over presentations on, just from, from memory, it was Mission College.
Wait.
FIMPOC, FIMPOC. Vice Chancellor Smith? Ruben? Where's Ruben? Oh.
Yeah, my memory isn't that. That was a long time ago.
Some of the topics that, that, that we went over on, on that day.
One of, one of the items was performance audit. And we, we went through detail on that presentation on performance audit, recommended for acceptance today, and then we had a couple of schematic designs.
A unanimous acceptance by Trustee Hoffman and I on that. We, we had tremendous disagreements on one. You know, but, but you, you got us at the end. It was unanimous. So we are recommending that to, to the board. It was an excellent facilities report, and I want to thank you. Anything else, Trustee Hoffman, that I potentially missed out of my great presentation?
Did we talk about the demolition of the theater?
Yes.
Trade. That's what I remember. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, that's an item that's recommended as well tonight. We talked about the, it's Los Angeles Trade Tech Master Plan. Supplemental Environmental Impact Report, as well as the demolition of the Grand Theater at L A Trade Tech.
We didn't miss material. We didn't lack for material, material for, for the FIMPOC Committee. We took all the entire time, and, and Trustee Vella, you were missed.
Well, I'm glad to see that. When I was sick, it was well taken care of by you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. All right. Thank you guys so much for that. Thank you guys so much. All right. Let's go ahead and authorize board travel ratification authorization. You have a motion and a second on motion by President, Vice, yeah, Trustee Weller. Second.
Second.
Second and by Vice President Henderson.
If, if possible, and I know, I'm sorry, I should have sent this in earlier when I saw the agenda, but wanted to be added to the, to the lobbying trips legislative day on item two, twenty twenty-three, and then the legislative day as well for ACC.
Okay, well noted. We'll go ahead and add you. All right, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Student Trustee Callahan's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
All right, motion passes. Let's go ahead and go into item I one. This is a resolution, again, preserving lifelong learning, self-demolition, and kinesiology educational opportunities for California community college students. AB nine two eight. May I have a motion and a second on item I one?
It's a move.
Motion by Vice President Henderson.
Second.
Seconded by Student Trustee Callahan. Any discussion?
Um, yeah, I would just like to make a
Yes.
A couple of comments. So first of all, I want to thank our public speakers today. You know, at board meeting previous, we had about forty public speakers on this issue, and I promised to take this to the joint board meeting with the league, which is the Community College Trustee Board and the C E O Board, and they had already been engaged in discussions. So at our last board meeting, which took place in San Francisco during the annual conference, this resolution was literally written with the blessing of the trustee board, the C E O Board, which comprises chancellors and college presidents, and the statewide academic senate president, Ginny Mae, was there, and they hashed out this resolution. We personalized it at the end, of course, to reflect that L A Community College District is going to do whatever we can to support the fact that we oppose changes, this change to Area E. I don't know how successful we'll be, but we left that meeting with the goal of every district passing this resolution and bringing it to their board so that, you know, their, their district faculty, staff, and administrators are aware. I mean, what really struck me about the comments today, there were CEOs and trustees and, you know, even faculty members at our meeting that literally echoed everything that was said in the comments from our public speakers today. Next week, there will be a meeting. There are three CEOs who have kind of spearheaded this project and are working with Ginny Mae of the Academic Senate, and they are going to talk about next steps. I can't promise, obviously, that much will change, but we can, you know, be a loud voice and advocate what we think is right for students. So I just wanted to mention that publicly, publicly, and I want to thank our public speakers today and faculty for bringing this to our attention in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Hoffman, for our work on this. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I would just
Vice President, yeah.
I would just like to echo what Trustee Hoffman and, and all the public speakers said today, how it's a huge disservice to the students and the community we serve, and it will disrupt a lot of things and just quality of life. And so I hope we will do whatever we can to have it amended or changed or just removed as an action item. And, and we'll, we'll see, but I am, I promise and dedicated to help fight against this. And if possible, I'd like to be added my name to the resolution as well.
Of course. You know, I also want to make the comment that the ICIS group that's been, that's coming together to streamline these transfer courses are, are members of the Academic Senate for the U C system, the C S U system, and for our system. And rather than just completely reject the recommendations, they're really trying to work together, because if they can't come up with a plan, I think by May, then this goes into the hands of the, the chancellors of those systems, and that would not be a very, a good thing. So they are trying to come up with some sort of a, a plan. And again, I don't know what else I can say on that. And Chancellor, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add?
Oh, you've covered it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any more discussion on this? Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote. You have a motion and a second on item I one.
Student Trustee Callahan's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Buena?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
Okay, motion passes. I Two, District Classified Employees Retirement. Congratulations to all the retirees. May I have a motion and a second on Item I Two?
So moved.
Okay, motion by trustee, Vice President Ino, second?
Second.
Second by trustee Hoffman. Any discussion? Again, congratulations. Hope you guys have a lot of fun, and we really appreciate all of your work here in the district. Absolute thanks, and again, thank you so much. All right, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Weller?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
I do want to point out that someone worked with us thirty-seven years. Unbelievable. That is fantastic. Congratulations to all the retirees. May I have a motion and a second on Item I Three? Item I Three adopts twenty twenty-three calendar for the Board of Trustees' regular meeting and Board Committee meeting dates. All right, so moved by Vice President Henderson, seconded by Vice President Ino. Any discussion about the calendar dates?
Can I just ask, I have to ask the question, I already know what the answer is, I think, but did we check to make sure it's not conflicting with holidays, Jewish holidays, or any other holidays where people might need to celebrate and not be out in public? Correct? Okay, thank you.
Those were checked, all right. Hearing no more discussion, let's go for vote.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Weller?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
All right, motion passes. Next up is Item I Four, AB three six one, Resolution of Oviedo Teleconference of Board Regular Meeting Schedule for January eleven, twenty twenty-three, and any special or emergency meetings that may be scheduled. All right, may I have a motion and second in on Item I Four?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motioned by trustee Hoffman, seconded by Vice President Henderson. Henderson, any discussion?
Question, I think this is one of the last months, this month and then maybe January or February, and then we're done with the, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and then are we all going to get sort of a briefing on what board meetings are going to look like going forward? Will, will we still have the ability to have the public zoom in? Do we have any details on what the new orders look like?
Let me, from the standpoint of technology and logistics, can you have Dr. Nish weigh in? If you have any legal-
Thank you.
... pieces, we'll have our general counsel. There are some changes and some provisions that allow for remote participation, but they're very narrow and strict.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Chancellor. General Counsel Medina has prepared a memo that we'll share with you regarding AB twenty-four forty-nine. These are new rules that may be applied once the state of emergency is being lifted, which we anticipate will be the end of February. It will require a physical quorum, whether you use the old rules or the new rules. It will require a physical quorum, and there's nothing that precludes the public from joining remotely. So if the board wishes to continue that practice, we certainly are capable of doing that. But all the details will be provided from our General Counsel Medina, and we'll have ample opportunity to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
If I may add, one more thing, and I'll discuss this with President Vella. For the time being, we will meet in this room.
Okay.
Made the practice of going to our colleges, we love doing that. But because this room is very well equipped to deal with our new realities related to Brown Act, that we'll remain in this room until further notice. But we'll discuss that more, because we would like to return at some point.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Trustee Hoffman, did you have any more questions?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, let's go ahead and call for a vote. Thank you.
Student trustee Callahan's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Weller?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veres?
All right, thank you. Motion passes. All right, next up is our report from the Chancellor. We'll now turn to Chancellor Rodriguez for his report. Thank you.
Thank you, President Vella, members of the board. Good afternoon. And we want to start this, it's wonderful to be here with you all, whether you are newly elected or returning to the board and to our officers. We welcome you all. Our entire LACC staff and administration looks forward to a very productive twenty twenty-three. Here's the Chancellor's report, and I want to begin by, by sharing that our district leadership really appreciates, recognizes, and embraces your enduring institutional commitment, members of the board, and your professional dedication to ensuring the success of and access to our nine colleges. We commit to identifying and breaking down the historical barriers for our most vulnerable student populations. We will continue to do that, and we will safeguard our ability to continue, to continue high-quality, affordable, accessible learning opportunities for the students that we are so proud to serve throughout our region. So I wanted to start with that, the formal statement in our level of commitment and our appreciation for each one of you and the roles that you are playing. What we got in store for today, just a couple of very quick updates. I want to commend our college presidents for their reports as codified earlier and on a monthly basis through the Chancellor's monthly report. We received that report. It is a publicly available document. I would hope that the members of the public and others would take time to peruse what is just an outstanding array of activities going on throughout our nine colleges and indeed the LACC D. I want to commend Juliette Hidalgo, who takes leadership over that document with the support of the colleges and their local public information officers. It is a demonstration, it's a articulation of the work that's going on to impact the lives of students, of families, of those who originally deserve an opportunity at education and the excellence that is upon this particular district. So with that in mind, let me just go on to the first piece here. I'll talk about Measure L.A. And I think we could say this formally now, the vote has been indeed certified, and at sixty-two percent, our public has said yes to Measure L.A. That's fantastic. I thank you all who were very, very much a part of this. Our district leadership team was very, very engaged in the educational element of letting everyone know as to what this bond would do. Indeed, this matches and adds to the very generous support from our public back in twenty sixteen, when they provided us three point three billion dollars in support to repair and to restore excellent teaching and learning environments for our colleges. This adds five point three billion, which will immediately begin to improve. Think about this for a minute, over four hundred miles of infrastructure. Dr. Smith, when I saw that number, my eyes said, what? That's from here to Sacramento in sewer lines, water lines, gas lines, ways that the buildings communicate with one another and to our other public utilities. It's an amazing, amazing task that will be at hand, and we thank our generous public for giving us opportunities to provide infrastructure repair, technology upgrades, to design and construct our facilities with the highest sustainability standards, but they last forty and fifty years, if not more, with the highest levels of stewardship in mind with the high-quality materials, and of course, with our project labor agreement in place with the highest quality of craftsmanship and people-ship that are creating our facilities there. So we're very, very pleased about that. So Dr. Smith, are we ready to get to work? Okay, there it is. So again, thank our PMO team, all those who were involved with providing exceptional teaching and learning facilities. And thank you, Los Angeles, for your trust, your confidence. We will not let you down, steward your resources and your trust to provide these opportunities for all Angelinos. Looking next into the, the next slide, just a little touch on the enrollment, a slide here. This is our winter session. It's a smaller percentage. It's a five-week session between fall and spring semesters. But just like the fall, where we were at four and five percent, we're up here. It's a good trend. And what's really important about the fall, it's not lose sight. And only are we up in terms of headcount and students FTS, the number of units the students are taking. But I reported to the board at the state of the district back in October, but it bears repeating that we're up in first-time students by eighteen percent, returning students persisting by thirteen percent, concurrent high school students that still enrollments by thirteen percent, students under the age of twenty by sixteen percent, up in male students, which we had lost for some time by three. Our full-time student enrollment, your college promises, up by eight percent. And very, very happy to report that our black student population is up by eleven percent this fall, and Latino student population is up by five. So if we disaggregate the data, we are reaching the types of students and environments that are so, so very, very important there. Next slide, please. It's also important, if you look at this winter, as to who's coming. But I wanted to point out the modality. This is, as we start to build back more in-person classes, more in-person activities and whatnot, we're still, at least at the winter session, principally almost, you know, over seventy percent on a remote and four percent hybrid. So three out of four classes have some level of technology, not unusual. This spring, we are again looking to balance the fifty-fifty model and increasing the number of in-person classes and services as the semester progresses towards the summer and indeed the fall. But this will be in part driven by the enrollments of students and by student interest demand and the experience and excellence of our faculty. Moving on, I'll say a little bit more about this little, again, disaggregating, looking into the micro window of this pilot class that Dr. Weller referred to. We are offering, for the first time, nineteen classes that are in language, as it's being described. And you see, we presented data at the September meeting, at the November meeting as well, and related to the need that we believe is out there for persons of speakers of languages other than English. So we are offering nineteen classes. We're at about, as of today, two hundred and forty students have been enrolled, about a third of the capacity. And we've seen every week, we have a late-enrolling student body, generally speaking, for both winter and spring semester. Drives us a little mad because it's hard to predict, but I think other colleges have the same experience, students wait until the end and sometimes to enroll. So we do expect those numbers to increase. Types of classes include child development, computer literacy classes, computers, the equivalency of high school GED, nutrition, healthcare, study skills of both a credit and non-credit format. And as you could see there earlier, mostly, mostly online. So we're very, very pleased for this, and we're receiving lots of attention. Or are we in fact addressing a need? Are we tapping into a niche? Are we broadening a bridge ultimately, English language instruction to ultimately skills building that move people out of poverty? Goal here is to give people skills, to give people skills so they can move through their workplace to incumbent workers so they can get higher-level jobs. And for those who have been displaced, dislocated, underemployed, and severely impacted by the last two and a half years, which we know, and proven, demonstrated time and time again, has had a disproportionate impact on underserved communities. We are part of that solution. I'm very proud of this district, the leadership of Dr. Weller, of our faculty, Dr. Albo Lopez was helping to shepherd this through the process as well. So we'll report more back later, but that is coming up in a couple of weeks, and we will report back on that. Moving on to, let's say, the budgetary advocacy. President Vella gave a report earlier, but we're going to be, you know, tapping into our priorities. We'll present those next month. Members of the board, we're going to be looking at, and you've seen these in the reports, generally speaking, finding ways to provide either budget support for or technical fixes, advocacy legislation that will support the engagement and recruitment of African-American students to once and for all get a magnetic studies requirement legislated throughout the state of California. It is a regulatory requirement right now. Continued support for LGBTQ students to make the ten million dollars that we received and advocated for a couple of years ago ongoing. And then Ms. Hoffman, as you've been so adamant about, and have really educated us, support for student parents throughout our district. So we're going to continue to lean in very, very closely on that, and of course, continue to work on workforce, getting people, you know, the way forward is a job. Way forward is economic development. We will continue to do that. So more to follow on that, and we do have meetings coming up at the end of January in Sacramento. We will continue to work with our local, our Los Angeles Regional Consortium of nineteen colleges, through our other colleges throughout the state, and then in February, visits the federal capital to engage in visits with the White House and other key departments to move our agenda forward. Accreditation is around the corner again. And I wanted to point out that this is a multi-year, multi-layered, detailed, and necessarily arduous process. The accreditation that we receive, this happens every seven years. It gives assurance to our public that we are stewarding their resources well, and that we have the kinds of outcomes that are expected and necessary for higher education. It validates our units, our credits, financial aid, opportunities, and really does give our public a sense, how are you stewarding the monies that we give you at your higher education institutions? So our colleges have all submitted their reports way back in the fall to their respective teams through the ACCJC. The teams are set. College presidents have done an excellent job in meeting with the teams. We have turned in our Iser reports, as they're called, their institution reviews, and they've been presented to the IESS, the leadership of Vice President Henderson. They've been approved by this board. So now we're three months and the clock is moving forward. We expect very, very strong outcomes for each of our nine colleges this year. The areas that will be identified ultimately will be areas that we can improve on, and we will take those recommendations very seriously, and we will move on them. But also we'll have underscored the areas that we're doing very, very well. So the core inquiries are being reviewed now at each of the colleges at the district. And again, I want to thank Dr. Albo Lopez, who serves as our district, really our accreditation liaison officer, all those, the colleges who are the ALOs, and the, and I had a chance to visit last week, but the district accreditation team, all excellent, doing work. Again, assuring quality for our students and the excellence of our faculty. I know we're all proud of that. And lastly, there it is. That's yes. Thank you for an outstanding year. Board members of twenty twenty-two, as we begin to wrap up this particular year, simply want to say thank you on behalf of our college presidents, our district executive team, our classified staff, our amazing faculty, Dr. Kivin, your leadership, and Dr. Tebby and others who are coming together. Alonso is here as well, and our classified staff, and others, our managers, classified managers, and others who come together, our deans, vice presidents, to support the one singular mission, and that is to ensure that student success occurs by design and not by default. Again, thank you very much, and I wish everybody a happy holiday. Muchos tamales, chaparrado, whatever you're into, bequete, whatever you enjoy. I, I hope that you enjoy it well with your families, loved ones. Again, on behalf of our entire district team, the members of the board, feliz navidad, feliz año nuevo, happy holidays to each one of you. So that ends my formal remarks. I'm happy to respond to any other comments or topics noted there or anything else that you'd like.
Yeah, let's start over here to my left. Let's go ahead and start over here to my left, trustee Hoffman.
Thank you Chancellor, that was a thorough report, and as usual, I appreciate it. I want to talk a little bit more about the DC visits, because I've been, as we speak, I'm being asked to do some stuff with the league. So I just wanted to make sure that we'll have enough trustees to do the visits that we need to do so that I can go do some other visits on behalf of the system, if that's okay. Okay.
And we typically, if I may add, we typically work with the league and Chancellor's office to do some joint activities together, perhaps even some joint visits, and then we veer off. But we do expect a good turnout from members of this board. We don't take a lot of people because it's, it's a back east trip for almost a full week.
Yeah.
But it's a very busy week. The trustees will be, we work with our federal advocates, Holland Knight, to have a talk already about multiple important, maybe fewer than we've had in the past, but more impactful. And that's, will also be the theme for the Sacramento visits. Fewer, more impactful, strategic, because there's lots of other districts doing the general stuff on advocacy. But we have some very specific district needs that we will continue to advocate for. So it's February fifth through the eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Just mark your calendars. For those who'd like to attend, we can still put you on the agenda, January, so we can make all the accommodations, registration, and we're part of a national audience. When this district shows up, it's a very, very proud moment for us.
Well, I want to thank you because of your leadership and your advocacy. We had the Assistant Undersecretary of Education come to LA Valley College, which was really great when we opened up the, your Mosaic Center, Dr. Griffins. And it was really a great opportunity for him. He wanted to hear directly from students, and he was taking back to DC, to the Department of Ed, what our students were telling him. So that was really a great opportunity. So thank you Chancellor.
Thank you so much. Anything else, trustee Hoffman?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you so much. Trustee Hernandez? Jesse Hernandez.
Well, great report and I just, I'm really excited to see your, just your enrollment snapshot. And it's always good news to see that we're on the up and up. I assume that this is snapshot that happens every meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I remember that, yes.
Yeah, no, I'm excited to just kind of dig into those numbers and get more information and how we can, you know, continue to work and make sure that we can support, uh, the college presidents in every way that we possibly can to make sure that it continues on the upward trend. But thank you.
Thank you. If I can note trustee Hernandez, uh, the Chancellor's monthly has this as a standing item. Uh, IESS has it as a standing item as well, which everyone can attend. But I would also, uh, uh, refer and I'll share with you, we have dashboards, real-time dashboards that we, uh, can send links to, you can look at what's going on literally on a daily basis. And we're very proud that we're able to mark, uh, monitor. And as the board of trustees know, and you know now, uh, we have a system, the student center funding form, and the three sort of areas. And we track each area by college, by area, so we can get a sense of where we can maximize the opportunity for enrollments and ultimately revenue for the district. As we move towards, uh, in twenty twenty-five, the end of this old harmless period that as Mr. Vela alluded to, and we have to make up quite a bit of ground, but we're moving in the right direction.
Fantastic. If I could get that length, that'd be great.
Thank you so much. Um, trustee, you know, or vice president?
I'm good. Thank you. It was a great report.
Appreciate it. Trustee Callahan? Is he not there?
Delete the meeting. He's longer here.
Okay, trustee, if you're on the chancellor's report. Trustee. All right, no comment for me. Thank you so much for your report, very thorough report. Appreciate it. All right, next up is our combined consent calendar. Um, board members, we now have for our review, the combined consent calendar for items L one through X five. These items include consent calendars for human resources, personnel commission, academic affairs, student services, budget, finance, business and facilities. Um, and are there any items which require additional information? Please state the item number and the agenda where we might find it. I'll start over here again. Left hand side, any agenda items?
Um, no items at this time.
No items at this time?
L one through X five?
Yeah, it's, um, our consent calendar. Does he know? Okay, over here? Nobody, okay, nobody from either two. Um, I think the chancellor, um, did he just pick off a little bit?
Yes.
Okay, um, I did want to ask him, but, um, deputy Nish, nothing? Okay, nothing on our side? So, um, go ahead.
If we can call, I just want to ask questions on the search.
Okay, so what item is that?
Them L, I guess it's three and five.
Oh, three and five? Okay, we'll go ahead and, um, pull those just for, um, inquiry and questions. Um, other than that, I would entertain a motion and a second to adopt the combined consent calendar for L one through X five.
Moved.
So moved by Vice President Henderson.
Second by Eno.
Second by Vice President Eno. Uh, any other discussions? Hearing none, let's take a roll call vote.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Motion passes. All right, let's go ahead and discuss these items. Uh, trustee Vettis.
Um, the P chancellor, are you, can you speak about these? Or is this something we should hold off on, wait till the chancellor gets here? We can move on with the rest of the agenda?
It would.
Only because it's executive search, so, and it comes under direct supervision for him?
You would like to wait? Okay. It might be more appropriate.
That, and then we can, we can come back to it and.
Let's do that. All right, we'll come back to that.
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
Chancellor, I, I wanted to ask questions about the executive search firms.
Yes.
Uh, well, actually the firm, because we're using the same firm. You're proposing to use the same firm for the two.
Yes.
Um, I wanted to get a sense as to, um, timing. Are these going out together?
Okay.
Um, uh, oftentimes when we've had that, sometimes lucked out and done well. Sometimes there's multiple, uh, applications that come in for both places. But of course, you know, we want to always respect the hiring process of each of the schools and.
Yes.
It's individual, so you just don't like have an automatic space. But so if you can talk about timeline, that factor and, um, and I guess I would want to say is, because we've had some searches that have resulted into sort of a rejection of candidates by the board, how are we going to ensure that this is going to be different than the past few that we've had?
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, trustee Vettis. First, let me talk about the timeline. Yes, both will be, uh, launched, uh, concurrently. Earlier this week, I asked members of the campus constituencies, the leadership, both at LA City and LA Southwest, to begin to assemble, uh, the search interview committee. And by board policy, uh, it is indeed governed in that particular way. So we'll begin there. And I would note that on both those committees for LA City and LA Southwest, board has the opportunity to appoint two members of the community that through the chancellor's office. So if you have any names to recommend, I'm happy to, uh, walk through those with you. It'll be lost same time, the committee will be formed. I've asked for the names by next week. Uh, the committee will meet, uh, in early January to review and approve the final, uh, job listing posting. A good number of it is, is indeed, a good part of it is, 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 uh, you know, we have descriptions from each of the colleges, but they'll add some very peculiarities of the college, the kind of characteristics that are important to the college, uh, community there. Uh, we're recommending, uh, community college search services, CCSS, a very bona fide, well-known, established, uh, firm, uh, for both of these searches. Reason is that, uh, this is really a handful of searches, firms that do, uh, this kind of work for California community colleges. And the others are occupied for, uh, Los Angeles, the Trade Technical, where we're using ACCT and we're using a PPL, the other firm, uh, for Los Angeles Pierce. Uh, we believe that there'll be synergy, uh, in posting these, uh, for six to eight weeks, uh, beginning on or about latter part of January, early February, uh, where interviews will take place, uh, in April, and then I'll bring recommendations to the board in May, but July first starts for both July, uh, for both LA City, uh, and LA Southwest College. The good news is we have both colleges in very capable hands, uh, with Dr. Culpepper, Southwest, and Dr. Gallagher. She, uh, both of them are, uh, there's no, uh, beat that's missed here. Uh, so we'll be able to, uh, engage in the college activities, uh, without missing a beat. So those will both begin on July first. And indeed, uh, to your point, last point, um, trustee Vettis, there are applicants who want to work for LA CCD and who are best suited and are interested in working at one particular college or another, and some who say, uh, that, um, that I'm interested in, uh, in, in working for the district and where I can best serve and whatnot. Indeed, when I got here in June of twenty fourteen, I, I had three college searches, uh, in front of me, Southwest, Valley, uh, and, and what was the third one? Was it Harbor? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Romano. I think we worked together on that. And, and, uh, so it was an, uh, an abundance of riches, of very talented people. Those, and some, uh, I can be candid here, said, hey, uh, meaning that there were in, in individuals who had applied to multiple institutions, but they're interested, they're, they're, they will go through the local process and whatnot. So I suspect we have a strong, diverse, pool and great candidates to choose from, both of those institutions. Did I miss any point of your question?
No, I, lots of it depends on timelines and the.
Yeah, thi- this is a normal cycle. This is a normal cycle, a winner posting.
We have two out right now, so that's what I wanted to be clear that, uh, oh, and, and, and clearly, you know, we have, uh, a lot of moving parts. Each of the schools are different.
They're all different. They all bring something strong to the table there.
Yeah.
So there might be pool members who are non-selects for one college. It would be exceptional for another. But again, we'll go through the process. Uh, there is no, those candidates that perhaps not selected for Pierce and/or trade are not automatically in the other pools. They have to apply, compete, uh, on separate process.
Thank you.
Also on L five, you're good? Okay. Any other questions on L one, I mean, L three and L five? Okay, excellent. Thank you so much for clarifying that. Let's go ahead now and go into item Y, uh, one through Y.
I think we need roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we did. On the exception of the calendar? We did, right? Okay, thank you. It's okay. Thank you for having my back and. Um, you know, I, I thought so too, because it was so long ago.
Sorry.
Yeah, not a problem. Okay, let's go ahead and move forward to business items Y one through Y four. Um, it's, uh, board members will now review business items. Are there any items that require additional information? Please state the item number on the agenda where, and where we may find it. Any, want any discussions? Yeah, trustee Hernandez.
Presentation on Y one.
Okay. Y one. Um, Ms. Moffett, anyone else? Item Y one, it's amendment number two.
I believe this is the, uh, professional service agreement for census. That's the group that has, uh, that has supported our attend site, complete website redesign. So Vice Chancellor Litz is not available, but please.
There we go.
Your main standpoint, let me ask Ms. Moffett to walk us through. Is there a specific question or just general information?
I just, I don't know the initial cost of the service agreement and just deliverables that we have now.
So I don't have the initial cost of the, uh, the original contract, but this amendment is to just continue services for the website design. And we went through, um, an RFP a couple of years back for this particular vendor to provide the services. And this iteration of the website is to continue on for the, I believe it's human resources, um, part of the, of the website. So I don't have that initial cost, but that's something that has been approved at a prior board meeting. But if that cost is needed, we can get that.
Is there deliverables that we have?
There have been, and the director, um, I don't know if Carmen is online, um, at all, but with the IT, uh, vice chancellor, there are deliverables that they monitor and ensure that they are completed prior to the items of being paid.
At the risk of, you know, wrong number, it was somewhere around seven hundred thousand, I believe, six, seven hundred thousand, if I recall the first part. I could be completely wrong.
Okay.
But so was, it gives you a sense, that was phase one. Again, uh, and some of our district's colleges have had the rollout already. It's, it's a staggering rollout, or a website redesign, functionality, ADA. We had had our websites, websites, um.
Five hundred.
Okay. Proved to be well familiar.
So, okay, so I, I was just reading, it says, um, phase one is just kind of delivering the scope definition? Is that, there isn't, has there been design?
Yes.
It has been.
Yes.
There has been some design and I just was, um, someone looked it up, the deputy chancellor. It's five hundred and twenty thousand for phase one.
So then I, can I ask a question? So it was five hundred and twenty thousand for phase one, but we don't have to go out for another RFP to do a four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar add-on?
Well, the RFP is generally for the entire services and then we bring it back to the board whenever there are some additional costs that are needed. So this is, we don't have to go back to the board for, or back to an RFP because it encompassed, the scope of work encompassed the entire, uh, LA CCD website redesign. But we're coming back for approval for the additional amounts.
So can we maybe get a demo next time about like what has been redesigned? I, I haven't noticed and so maybe it's just me, but can we get a demo of what's been redesigned on our website?
Sure, I'll convey that. Is that Chancellor?
Chancellor. Chancellor.
You can put that in the chancellor's report next month if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, I, I would. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I asked this because I'm, you know, I'm trying to center like enrollment and access and students access on all of these issues. And we all know that website has a huge, um, you know, it's a huge factor in promoting that sort of access. But a million dollars on website design that we haven't seen. It's just a scope definition, at least according to, uh, what it says here. I think it would be really helpful as trustee, to get some sort of, sorry, Hoffman, um, the better understanding of what, what benchmarks he's already achieved.
We can give a full report and I think Harbor College has rolled out already, isn't it? So they're live. That's the whole redesign. Want to take some time on this?
I think, um, yeah, I, I would like to come back with the, uh, a report to, uh, trustee Hernandez and trustee Hoffman, and then also further talk about the milestones in the future. Yeah, let's, let's do that.
I was also going to mention one piece here because.
Thank you for bringing it up. Appreciate it.
Um, you know, we've had an ongoing conversation here about the AD access.
Yes.
And, and that element is sort of made, I mean, based on litigation lawsuits, it's created another, another element, the website redesign. And so I think as we do the presentation, I think we also have to include an update for trustees who weren't here to deal with some of the litigation issues. It created some of the access, you know, demands and, uh, validations that, uh, need to take place. That's, I think there's a big part of the cost that comes from.
Absolutely, I'm sure.
But, you know, well noted, and it's extremely important to, as we increase our, our enrollment goals in particular. So really appreciate, thank you, Ms. Moffett. Really appreciate it. Um, any more questions on any of the Y one through Y four? Okay, I don't think we do. At this time, I'd like to have a motion and a second to adopt business items Y one through Y four.
Moved.
So moved by Vice President Henderson. Any second? All sec. Trustee Vettis, trustee Vettis, second, roll call, please.
Trustee Bueno? Yep. Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno? Absent. Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Item Z one, authorized foundation agreement at ELAC. Board members may have a motion and a second to adopt Z one.
Moved.
All right, moved by Vice President Henderson, second by trustee Vettis. Any discussion? No discussion? All right, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Bueno?
Yes, I mean here.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yeah.
Trustee Eno? Absent. Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Vettis?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Um, item double A facilities, item double A through double A fifteen. Um, at this time, board members will now review facility items double A one through double A fifteen. We'll be voting on each item individually. Um, is there any items that you would like to, um, further have any questions?
And the members of the board, as you consider that, uh, we do have to have item AA five pulled as a separate vote. So as you consider the other consenting, pull any item you'd like for discussion. We do have to have.
We do have to do that as a separate vote. Okay. All right, any, uh, over here to my left? Okay, my right? All right, let's go ahead and pull up double A five. And that is the Los Angeles Trade Tech Supplemental Environment Impact Report, Facilities Master Plan Update. Again, that was what was discussed in the, uh, FIMPAC that I missed. Uh, but now it's up for us for a vote. So again, of importance, I know that they talked about the theater, which, um, again, has been, um, one of the points of interest. Any discussion on that? None? Okay, let's go out for a separate vote. Uh, yeah.
I just want to say, trustee, because I know there's a number of questions that were handled in closed session.
Yeah.
So just to not say, I mean, for the public to understand and acknowledge, um, because of legal issues raised, we've had to have a bulk of conversations with this in closed session.
We, we did and, and. Uh, thank you, trustee Vettis, for pointing that out. We also had various, uh, briefs before at FIMPAC as well. Um, and also Trade Tech was also dealing with the community on this. So we want to thank our interim president as well, Ms. Burke, for handling the community stakeholder process and Dr. Smith. So can I have a motion and a second? For AA five, so moved by Vice President Henderson, second, anyone? Okay, trustee Veras seconds it. All right, no more discussion. Uh, let's go to a roll call vote.
Trustee Bueno.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vela.
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. May have a motion and second to adopt facilities items double A one through double A fifteen minus double A five, which we just took up for a separate vote. Can I have a motion and a second?
Moved.
So moved by Vice President Henderson, second. Second by trustee Ino or Vice President Ino. Any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, let's go for a roll call vote.
Trustee Bueno.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vela.
Yes.
Veras.
All right, let's go ahead and go, motion passes. Let's go ahead and go to item BB, recommendations from the chancellor approval of board policies, chapter three. May have a motion. Well, actually, why don't we go ahead and you give us a brief description on these board rules? I, I do want to, uh, sorry, board policies. These are um, always discussed before we actually vote through the chancellor. So I apologize for that. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, uh, board president Vela. This regards support, board policy thirty-five oh five related to emergency response plan. This is something that we have to have in place, has been reviewed. Uh, we also, I want to thank uh, the ad hoc working group of the board of trustees with you, Mr. Vela and Ms. Henderson. We read this as well. This uh, we have about five or six board policies left uh, to push through. Uh, we're noting it in the new league policy format, uh, but this is a, a, that we put forth last month as a first read and now asking for your full approval of BP thirty-five oh five related to our emergency response plan.
Chancellor, are there any um, items of importance that we must be aware of? Because I know this was very important.
Let me ask Dr. Nish to bring this up. She was and continues to uh, lead this particular effort. So anything to highlight, Dr. Nish?
Uh, this is a, basically a broad policy statement. We are required to have emergency response plans. We do. Um, but this, this codifies the board policy that we are required to have emergency response plans and that they must be in compliance with NIMS and SIMS um, mandates. As you know, uh, we certainly have had emergency response plans. We updated them uh, with the COVID experience and now we're in the process of updating all of the college uh, plans as well. We've worked on this using the model from the league, but we also had it reviewed from our safety and security staff. And it was also presented to the Safety and Security Oversight Committee. So we feel that this is a, a good policy statement about our requirements. And you'll be seeing in the months to come, updated emergency plans for each of our colleges and for our downtown office.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion on the approval of board policies, particular chapter three? Any more discussion here? None. Let's go ahead and have a motion and second on item BB one.
I'm moved.
Moved by Vice President Henderson, second.
Second by Ino.
Second by Vice President Ino. All right, uh, let's go ahead and roll call.
Trustee Bueno.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vela.
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
He's down here.
Absent.
Okay, motion passes. Um, item CC is the notice reports and informatives. Um, one is the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three first quarter financial status report. And then the second is the notice for approval again of board policies and that's uh, chapter three, which we discussed. These are just informative. No action is required. Next up is item DD, announcements again and indications of future proposed action by mem, actions by members of the board of trustees. I'll start to my left, trustee Hoffman, anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay, trustee Hernandez?
I mean.
Okay. Um, vice president, you know?
No.
Trustee Bueno, uh, Vice President Henderson?
Nothing.
Okay. And then I don't have anything right now. Uh, I think, and then we'll see, trust, yeah, go ahead.
President, I'll just note, I'll just note that we will for January have a presentation on our websites.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, uh, trustee Hernandez for bringing that up. We appreciate that a lot. Okay, our favorite part, trust, uh, EE, public comment, and these are requests to address the board of trustees regarding matters not on the agenda. Are there any persons signed up to address the board on matters not on the agenda? I do have a list here. I'll go ahead and call and if uh, you are still here, please come up to the uh, podium. Uh, Jorge Claustro? Jorge, come on up. Yeah, you have uh, three minutes.
Hi, I'd like to say thank you for your time and congratulations to the board members that uh, got their recent upcomings. Um, sorry, I'm a little
You want to pull the microphone to you a little bit?
Sure. Hi, I'm pretty much here to stay to see if there's anything could be done. Uh, my name is George Claustro, I stated. Uh, I used to work at the Vincent Price Art Museum, great museum, of course. Um, and I wanted to see if there could be anything done about my um, my uh, forced to retire, unfortunately. Um, it was been great years working at the Vincent Price Museum. I just think that there was issues that uh, should have been brought up uh, on there and um, my union did mention before, um, this could be an option to see if I could uh, come and talk to the board of trustees to see if there's anything that can be done. Uh, out of the years of working at the Vincent Price Museum was amazing. I started at twenty twelve, all the way to twenty nineteen. So all the shows that were brought up and made were from um, this museum professional. I worked in the exhibition, collections, registrar and conservation department. I ran pretty much almost fifty percent of the museum physically. With of course, student workers and other employees at the Vincent Price Art Museum. Um, I just wanted to see if I could maybe get a little guidance to see who I could submit some information that could possibly help me on my case and maybe in the future, provide more assistance to the Vincent Price Museum uh, to provide great shows as we have in the past. Uh, sadly, I did notice that the shows have been reducing over the years. Uh, it could, it's also, it's due to COVID and also um, I was a preparator with multiple years of experience and training in museum profession in order to get a lot of these shows done. So I'm here to hopefully see if this little Latino could come back and work with such a great um, team as we have here and at the Vincent Price Art Museum.
Thank you again so much, Mr. Claustro, for coming by. Uh, we'll go ahead and have the chancellor contact you directly. We have your information.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. Um, next is Jorge Inigas, um, on Zoom. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Yes, I, I just uh, muted myself. Uh, well, thank you for allowing me to talk on uh, faculty, part-time faculty on my behalf. Well, good afternoon, trustees, trustees and chancellor. My name is Jorge Inigas. I'm a proud adjunct faculty teaching biology at East LA College. First and foremost, I wanted to thank the district for agreeing to the MOU with our union guaranteeing a one-time temporary health coverage increase for twenty twenty-three for part-time faculty. Uh, it was the right thing to do and it'll make a huge difference in terms of security and well-being for myself and my colleagues who give so much to this district. Now I'm here today to urge you to continue to prioritize healthcare negotiations in the new year and to make use of the two hundred million in ongoing funding from the state to improve healthcare for part-time faculty in our district. Now, although I'm forty-five years old, I just turned forty-five a, a couple of days ago. I'm still young at heart and I play adult baseball for the LA City League. And last month, I actually dove for a baseball and tore a tissue in my knee. Luckily, I had health coverage through the district, so I was able to quickly see a doctor and obtain crutches so that I wouldn't have to miss class. My daughters play sports as well and luckily are on their mother's health plan. However, I worry, if anything happens to my partner and her job, that continuing family coverage would be a huge financial burden for us, given the limitation of LA CCD's healthcare options. I hope we can rectify here this at LA CCD. Now, if employees and their families don't have access to preventive he, care and yearly physicals, you could end up with having more employees out for long periods of time with serious illness or caregiving. Having a stable, affordable and accessible source of healthcare is imperative to our continued ability to serve our students and the community. What I wanted to say is please support healthcare in parity with our full-time colleagues for all adjunct faculty at LA CCD. This includes quality coverage not only for myself, but for my loved ones as well. When educators thrive, our students thrive as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next up is Amelia Borja. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello.
Hello.
Hey, everyone. Um, as you said, my name is Amelia Borja. Uh, I'm an adjunct professor at Los Angeles Valley College. And I'm also here to advocate for improved healthcare for part-time faculty in our district. Um, currently, I receive health insurance through my wife. Uh, the insurance has decent coverage, but it's quite expensive and it often changes, which forces us to switch providers, uh, pay out of pocket and constantly fluctuate between having or not having mental health resources. Uh, even in California, it's difficult to find providers that provide truly good equitable care for queer people. Each time our insurance changes, we begin again the cycle of researching, affirming providers, driving hours to meet them and often facing subtle but uh, nonetheless discriminatory treatment. Um, as a queer couple, starting a family is more complex and more costly than for some other couples. And although it's something that my wife and I both want, we have been forced to put our plans on hold. Uh, a decision that we made in part because of the instability in our healthcare. Um, also, I just want to mention that in addition to affecting me and my family personally, I think that providing stable healthcare for part-time faculty is the right thing to do. The district relies on us to perform critical roles, um, picking up classes at the last minute, teaching a wide variety of classes within our disciplines, working at multiple campuses uh, and carrying oftentimes the same course load as full-time faculty, but without the promise of a job with each new semester. In order to provide this and stay on the cutting edge of our disciplines and cutting edge of pedagogical practices, as well as to be there for our students, we need to be healthy. And I hope that the district can help us uh, by ensuring that we have access to one of the most basic essentials for our livelihood. So trustees and chancellor, please help us expedite the negotiations, expand access to affordable, quality healthcare for adjunct faculty and our families at LA CCD. Thank you.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Ms. Borja. Next up is Ralph Troff. Come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Ralph Troff and I've been an adjunct in the LA CCD for twenty-seven years, currently at Trade Tech. My employment here has been the source of my health insurance for much of my adult life. I want to share with you that I lost everything in the recession of two thousand and eight. After teaching sixteen classes a year in two districts, I suddenly found myself with only four. I had to use credit cards for rent and groceries. I spiraled into debt. I lost my Kaiser HMO because I wasn't teaching enough to maintain it. This is a reality that thousands of adjunct professors face. When the work picked up, I accepted every class offered. By twenty fourteen, I was teaching eighteen a year, twice a full-time professor's load. But that load took a toll. While the quality of education I provided my students never suffered, my personal life did. I couldn't sleep at night. I was overworked, anxious and struggling with my mental health. Fortunately, I had regained health insurance, my doctor prescribed medication, I had access to a counselor and I'm better now. But still angry with the system that demands professional excellence from adjunct teachers, but not, does not treat them with the respect they deserve. If the LA CCD is going to rely so heavily on adjunct faculty, it is essential that those employees have reliable access to healthcare. It's in everyone's best interest that the district implement AB one ninety, so it can be reimbursed up to a hundred percent of the cost. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Troff. Next is Kathleen Addison. Come on up.
Hello. So I am Dr. Kathleen Addison and thank you for hearing us today, um, trustees and chancellor. Uh, I have been, like my colleague Ralph, I have been a adjunct faculty for twenty-five years and um, have worked with our colleagues tirelessly in Sacramento and here within LA CCD to provide some kind of healthcare on parity with what our full-time colleagues receive. Um, and so we're here today to urge you to please implement negotiations for that two hundred million from the state that is ongoing to provide us with healthcare on parity that is accessible, affordable and quality. Um, like my colleague as well, I have been in the position where, first of all, I couldn't afford the part-time healthcare uh, provided by the district. And I also have been in the position where it's a choice between paying bills on time or paying for your healthcare. And that's not a choice we should have to be making in order to remain healthy enough to stay in the classroom and do our jobs. And so I thank you for your time. I hope you will open the negotiations in the new year as soon as possible to get us a workable and practical and equal healthcare.
Thank you very much. Um, next up is Rodolfo Casares. Come on up.
Good afternoon, board members. Thank you guys for inviting us uh, to come and speak here and public comment. I want to say a personal hello to Steve. I know Steve from a long time. I also know Gabriel Bueno for a long time. So hopefully this message goes out on a personal side as much as it does go to the board as a whole. Um, I have been a part-time uh, faculty member at Los Angeles Mission College, teaching communications and Chicano studies for over fifteen years. And at the onset of that career, uh, which has been a, a, a long-term adjunct faculty member for the district, uh, I was lucky to have health insurance through my ex-wife. Um, since then, we've had two children and, and our children have coverage through my ex-wife, but I also worry. I also worry that something happens to my ex-wife that my children will have no insurance. And it's my job as a, as a parent to provide for them. Now, my job does well by me. It pays me well, so I can provide by, to them. Thank you for, for helping me make that a reality. But my other job as a parent is to also protect them. And that leaves me in this fine place of if they ever get sick and they don't have health insurance, can I both provide for them and protect them? And I don't see it possible without extending the health insurance uh, that we should have to our families and to our loved ones. I urge you guys to act now. I urge you guys to make it a board goal to implement the health insurance that we have, you know, on, on your desks to, to, to provide quality health insurance to our families, to our children, um, so that we can continue to do the job that we do so happily for our students. Um, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much. I know and I trust that you'll do the right things. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much, Mr. Casares. Um, we do have one more uh, person that's online, uh, Ms. Ozan, Chris? Go ahead and unmute yourself. With the
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay. Good afternoon, board of trustees and chancellor. My name is Chrisana Ozan, representing SEA Local ninety-nine. Um, sorry, but I do apologize. I wasn't able to uh, join the research table earlier. You know, I was having trouble trying to get on the computer, but I just want to say um, congratulations to uh, trustee Vela Henderson and Ino for your new roles as president and vice president. I want to say congratulations to our newly and re-elected board members. Welcome trustee Henderson. And um, you know, I just want to say, as many of you may know, we still are dealing with issues, you know, with low staffing and um, house-to-work environment issues and um, we look forward to working with you to, you know, address all of these matters. And lastly, um, I just want to say, um, thank you to, uh, well, I want to thank Dr. Moreno for all his years of service and leadership, you know, to, to this district and for um, everything that he's done to support our members. And I wish him nothing but the best. Thank you and happy holiday to you all.
Thank you, Ms. Ozan, for um, speaking and happy holidays to you and your members. Um, okay, um, if there's any, there's no more um, speakers on non-clos, uh, now we're going to request to address the board of trustees regarding closed session agenda matters. Are there any persons signed up to address the board on closed session agenda matters?
Nobody officially signed up, sir.
Okay, there is none, so we'll go ahead and go into item FF one, recess into closed session. The board will recess into closed session in accordance with Ralph Brown Act, government code fifty-four nine fifty and the education code to discuss the matters posted on the closed session agenda pursuant to government code fif, five four nine five four point five. May I have a motion to recess to closed session?
So moved.
Okay, so moved by Vice President Bueno, seconded by Vice President uh, Ino, uh, seconded by Vice President Henderson. Uh, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Trustee Bueno.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson.
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez.
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman.
Yes.
Trustee Ino.
Yes.
Trustee Vela.
Yes.
Trustee Veras.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, some other motion passed, meeting adjourned. We're going to recess